I don't think so at all. And if anything, it could help him.
Yeah.
You know, when you think about registered voters and the demographic of the people that get out and vote, they tend to be an older demographic. So you're going to be looking at a lot of people that already know John, that are familiar with John.
Right.
So that could help him.
Okay, you bring up some good points. Any challenge for John? Anything that you see he may have to overcome tonight?
Um, you know, I can't really think of anything at this point.
Yeah. I think, you know, it's funny, everything you've said I agree with. I think one thing John is going to speak to is he knows and is aware of the age gap. And even though it shouldn't be a factor, we have to be honest, what are voters wanting? Do they want someone with experience or are they wanting fresh?
Yeah, new ideas, outside the box.
Right. And so I think John's biggest challenge is going to be how can he communicate?
And connect with that demographic.
And connect, that's it.
Yep.
He's experienced, but he can come up with new ideas and think outside the box. I think that's going to be his challenge. I think that's his biggest challenge.
It'll be interesting to see how he tries to marry those two things together.
I think you're right.
If he can do it.
Yeah, and we'll see, we'll see. Okay, talk about Colleen McCloud.
Colleen McCloud. She's been a county commissioner before.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, this is not her first rodeo. She's done this before. Beloved citizen, owns a business downtown, that has, you know, really loyal followers. She is very vocal about her stance on things. So I think that will either buoy her or, you know, that'll be a challenge that she has. But she's coming into it with a whole lot of knowledge that a lot of the other candidates, well, none of the other candidates come to the table with.
Okay, that, you bring up a good point. So do you think she is going to capitalize on that knowing, okay, a concern for the community will be, we've got two outgoing commissioners. One who's there is fairly new. How will she capitalize on this idea and communicate that she has been there, she knows what she's doing?
She can hit the ground running.
Yeah, that's it.
Where there's probably a learning curve for some of the newbies that haven't been in city or county government before.
Right.
She'll be able to go in there and she, you know, it's not a new hat for her to be wearing. She knows exactly what needs to happen and the way in which to make it happen. The other thing is she has the connections, she has the network.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people that are probably still in government that she worked with before. She knows those people. It's going to be really easy for her to fall back into that office and pick it up and know what she's doing.
Okay, so you see that as a strength?
Absolutely.
Okay, talk about a challenge. What do you think she's going to have to overcome tonight?
Um, maybe the years that she's been out of the office and the things that have changed. Or if there was anything, and I can't think of anything specific, but if there was anything that she was involved with at the time that she was in office that was controversial, that people took issue with, that they're still holding grudges against, that could be a challenge.
Well, and that's a good point. You know, the rural community.
We don't forget.
People remember. And not that anyone at home is like that way. But I think some we have to acknowledge that that is a challenge and I don't know her track record. Okay, let's go to our last candidate. How many on time? Okay, we're good. Let's talk Matt Scarphone.
Okay.
Tell us about Matt.
Again, business owner. Everybody knows him. He has been on the chamber board. He was the chamber president for a few years.
That's right.
He came back and served on the board for us when we were short board members.
Right.
He is younger. This is sort of his first stab at government. Enthusiastic. He's got a really outgoing personality. He's going to speak to the younger demographic.
Oh, absolutely. So in thinking about that too, Matt is a guy who, as I know him, very determined.
Absolutely. Very motivated.
Very motivated. So, talk to me about this. It has been said with those personality types, they can tend to be more bulldoggy, bulldozy, not playing well on the sandbox. Is that going to be something that comes up tonight? Will that hurt him?
Yeah, I think it could come up. The other thing that I think that he's going to have to watch out for is the people that don't know him, maybe that older demographic that just thinks, you know, he's all talk, he's excited, he's a kid, you know, he's got lots of great ideas, but is he going to pull the trigger on anything? Is he going to know how to facilitate any of those ideas? Or is it all going to be, you know, big flashy, showy?
That's a challenge, yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll see. And it's going to be interesting to see how they all interact together. And that's the other question I had for you. Any drama expected tonight? Because you know, we're going to have all four of them, just so everybody at home knows, we'll have all four of them up on the stage tonight at the same time. We are limiting, you know, the questions that can be asked are 30 seconds.
Right.
The responses are a minute. And we literally have a countdown clock that would let them know when their time's on the staff.
So they have a very limited amount of time to get the best information out to the people that are in the audience and the people that are at home. They can't be rambling on whatever it is that they need to get in there. They need to get to the point and they need to get to it quick.
Okay, I agree. Do you see any jabs? Any left hooks coming in?
You know, I hope not.
I hope not too.
I mean, just because this isn't a debate setup, I mean, that's not how we're formatting the framework of this forum. So I'm hoping that everybody plays nice. You know, everybody's using their pleasantries and that. But I sort of hope for that out of the audience too, that their questions are, you know, because we do have a bar in the back.
We do.
So I get a little nervous about too much alcohol flowing and what kind of questions could be asked. But I think it'll be fine. We're here to mediate, it'll be fine.
We're here to mediate, of course. With you here, we'll take care of it. So by the way, we want to thank Bud Jackson. Hey. You can come back, we can introduce you. This is Sharice from the Observer.
Hi, Sharice.
We do want to thank Bud Jackson for coming out and hosting that bar for us. He has promised that he's going to limit how much alcohol people get and the glasses will be smaller and the cans of beer.
That'll be a good thing for everyone.
So absolutely. Okay, last thing, because we need to wrap up.
Yeah.
We're about ready to start. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for being brave enough to stand up and do this. I hope you enjoy it as much as I'm looking forward to it.
It's going to be a blast. I'm excited to hear what everybody has to say. I'm, you know, the conference center is filling up with people, so I'm excited to see all the people that are here to engage with the candidates. I'm excited for the table talk at the end of the night. I think it's going to be great.
Yeah, real quick too, viewers at home, I wish you could be here for that too. What we've decided to do is a lot of the times when we are in an open forum like this, the questions that are asked, we've asked them to please ask questions that will relate to all the candidates. But if they do have a one-off question, we've got different tables set up at different locations in the room, so that individuals can go over and ask them those one-on-one questions.
Right. They're just flanking the outside of the room. They all have some of their material too, some of their pamphlets that they have. So I would encourage everybody that's within here, or even if you're at home right now, you're thinking, God, I should go down there. Come down and see if you can get some one-on-one time with your candidate.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, well, I think we're good. We'll take a break.
Okay, sounds good.
And thank you for tuning in. I'm looking forward to the forum tonight. We should get started, probably about 10 minutes here, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
About our communities. Thank you for the civil leaders and the people that are here tonight that want to be informed and want to love and serve their community so well. I pray that you bless the questions and the conversations tonight and that they'd be constructive and ultimately make this wonderful place that we live, Union County, a better place. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Erin. Well, good evening. Thanks for taking time to come out. Corinne, this isn't scary or anything.
No, not at all.
Do you see who's here?
Yep, everybody.
Yeah, this is scary.
Everybody's here.
Well, welcome. We're glad you're here. And for you at home, thank you for tuning in. We are live streaming on Facebook through Brent Clapp Media Service, LaGrande Live, so we're glad you're with us tonight as well. What a night. What a big night that we get to come together and talk about some important issues and people in our community. So what do you think?
I'm excited. This is a bigger turnout than I was expecting, and I've done a few of these sort of in a different format. So I'm glad that all of you were willing to take the time to come out, and I'm excited to hear what the candidates have to say.
Yeah, first things first, though, we've got an unprecedented election coming up. We've got two county commissioners of the three that are leaving their office, and we're looking for two new ones to come onboard. We want to take a split second and honor the two who were moving on. And so I don't know if they're able to make it tonight. Did Jack-
I saw one of them, so...
Okay. Can we have Steve? Steve, are you here?
He is here.
There he is.
I saw him walk in.
Steve, we just wanted to say thank you. Steve McClure, thank you. Ms. Kelly, can you take? There you go. Steve, from the bottom of our heart, thank you for your service to our county. You have been a great man. You've done some great things. I saw Steve in action as he worked to get the clinic in Elgin, was a part of that to get that going. So Steve, we thank you as a county. We're very thankful for you. So thank you. And then Jack Howard, I don't know if Jack had a chance to make it tonight.
Did Jack come in?
Okay. We wanted to thank Jack as well. And Jack, even though you're not here, maybe you're watching at home, thank you for your service to our county. We appreciate you and what you've done. We wish you the best as you move forward in your next election, and much success to you as well. All right, so...
So I, yeah, round of applause for Jack and for Steve. And then I would like to call to the front Donna Beveridge, Union County Commissioner. She's got a few things that she'd like to say.
And as Donna's coming, Donna is the last person standing up there.
The survivor.
And fairly new. So Donna, tell us some thoughts, how you're doing, and your expectations.
Well, I can tell you there's a lot more to this job than I even dreamed of, even with all the background I did and talking to previous county commissioners. So there's a lot of work to it. I enjoy working with Steve and Jack. They're great. Tonight, I'm anxious, just like you are, to hear the different things that people have to say. Basically, what's important to me is having a passion for Union County. You're not going to know everything. There's a lot to learn. There's a huge learning curve. But if you care about the county, you will keep learning. And it's also important to me that they're willing to listen to everyone. This is a nonpartisan position. Highest elected official in Union County besides the sheriff. A four-year term. So what we do is, I'm in my second year of a four-year term, and then we rotate. So to me, those are the most important things to listen for tonight. Thank you.
Donna, thank you. Thank you for what you've done there. Your learning curve has been pretty steep, and you've done a great job, just so you know. So thank you.
A round of applause for Donna Beveridge.
There are some people we do want to thank for this evening. This was put on, this was no small task, by the way. We met with a board that we asked both, all the parties in Union County to come together, the Republicans, the Democrats, and the independents, as was all the media sources. And we proposed an idea to them that was a little different than, say, past forums. This is not a debate. It's a little different. It's a forum, with the concept is, we don't want to filter any questions. We, quite frankly, we don't even know the questions that people are going to ask.
So be kind.
Yeah, please be nice. I did see one from the Cattlemans, and it was okay. No, it was really good. But we got this group together and asked, can, do you think this is something that people would find valuable? And the answer was absolutely yes. And so I do want to thank some people who, Susan Priscall was our project lead for this, the forum board. I want to thank you for putting up-
And if you're in the room, raise your hand or stand up so we can acknowledge you.
Yeah, if the forum board, that's the media, and then the political parties. If you were on that board, can you stand so we can thank you? There we go. Got some in the back in here. Bill, thank you.
Thank you. And we also want to take just a few minutes to thank our sponsors. We had a lot of sponsors that stepped up to the plate for tonight's event. The first one would be Certified Personnel Agency, and they are in charge of the food in the back.
Thank you.
And if at any time during tonight you guys want to get up and grab something else to eat, please, it's very casual, go ahead and go back and do that. And then we have the bar, which is sponsored by Bud Jackson's.
Now, you know that was a little controversial.
Bud, raise your hand.
You know that was controversial.
I thought it was an awful idea to begin with, yes.
This could be scary. Anyway.
So Bud has assured us that he's going to be monitoring the alcohol intake, so if anybody seems to be taking in just a few too many, and the questions start to get a little wild, we'll have to do something about that. But a few other people that we want to thank, Casey Kunkel, who's our sound man. Casey, stand up.
Thank you, Casey.
There you go. Thank you, Casey. Legacy Ford of LaGrande. Greg Colasi's in the back. Greg, raise your hand, please.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. Brent Clapp Media Service. So that's where our live feed is coming from. Brent is over here in the corner. Thank you, Brent. And then our media sponsors. So we have the LaGrande Observer, the Nickel tidbits, Supertalk Radio, Elkhorn Media Group, and last but not least, the Union County Chamber of Commerce members and all of our supporters. So thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you. And the membership, oh, please, yes. To the members who are part of the Chamber of Commerce, thank you for supporting this. We think it's important. And the membership all rose up and said it is important, and we need to move forward with this type of forum. So thank you to you who are members. Let's get right to it, shall we?
Let's do this.
We've got some framework that we want to share with you, and that we want to just go over a couple ideas to prep your minds on the questions to ask and how to ask them and what those look like. So as we look at the screen together, so here's our framework. We want to stick to Union County issues as best we can. Now, I know there are some issues that can drill down into Union County, but as you think of these questions, you know, we actually said, well, if you ask a candidate about global warming, I'm not sure that's something that's going to really fit their job description.
Right, I agree.
But if you ask a candidate about global warming in Union County, now see, that works, right? No.
No.
All right, hey, I'm trying to spin it here.
No global warming questions.
I can make it work. All right, so please, Union County issues, questions need to be framed so all the candidates can ask. And here's the thought behind that. If you ask one candidate or single out a candidate and ask them a question, we're not going to get a full spectrum. So if you have something that's designed for one candidate, try to frame your question in such a way that every candidate can ask.
Right, and I think part of that, too, is just to make sure, because I think a lot of you are coming in the door and not knowing exactly, you know, what your candidate's stance is on something, and probably a lot of you haven't made up your minds. So having them open that way, open-ended, and in a way where everyone can answer will give all of you sort of a better indicator when you leave here of where the candidate stands on the issue.
Right. And the next thing is individual or personalized questions can be answered at the table talk. So here's what we've done. We had a drawing, and the candidates drew which table they would be at. When we're done this evening, if you have something that you are very concerned about but is more of an individualized question, feel free, go to the tables when we're done. The candidates have all agreed that they are happy to answer any questions you have for them, if it's something more individualized. Okay? All right, next thing. Questions need to be 30 seconds. So you might be thinking, oh, my gosh, how can I ask a question in 30 seconds? We actually tried it, and it can be done.
30 seconds is a long time to ask a question.
So if you've got a long, rambling question, you might want to bring that down to about 30 seconds, and that way we can really wrap our minds around it, and the candidates can answer it. The answers need to be about a minute. And so just so you know, we have got a countdown clock. These poor candidates, if you can see what I'm looking at right now. It literally has one minute. It starts counting down. As it gets closer to the time, it starts blinking red, and then it starts throwing things at them, okay?
Right. And it's less abrasive than us going, shh, shh, shh.
Or what we do at our banquet, where the mic goes down, the music goes up, right?
It's pretty effective, though.
It's very effective. Okay, so that's our framework. Cody, what was the next slide? Okay, so here's the other thing, too. We want to start with the district attorneys. We're going to give them 30 minutes. You can ask them whatever you want. I want to say this so you know, the candidates have all been very open. None of them have said, they can ask me this, this, but not this. They've all said, they're here, they want to serve, they love Union County, and I have to tell you, I admire these people. They're all good people. So what we want to do, we'll start with this one first. And we're not going to read all this to you, so we're going to leave that up for a few minutes. If you wonder what a district attorney does, this gives you an idea. Now, the next slide is going to talk more about the mission. Here we go. There's the mission of the DA's office. We're going to run that back and forth so you can see it as we introduce them and start talking with them. We'll help you frame some questions. Okay, did we get everything we were supposed to get? Are we there?
I think so. I think we're ready.
Okay, so to keep it fair, we struggled with how we introduced the candidates. If we introduce one over the other, we don't want, it could be biased.
Right.
So we came with a very scientific method.
Totally scientific.
Technology-driven. We're going to be pulling ping pong balls out of a little transparent thing. Ms. Kelly's going to do that, and she's going to introduce our very first candidate to the stage for the district attorney.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to introduce Laura Exton.
Laura, you want to come on up?
Laura, come on up. And- And then next, of course, ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to introduce Kelsey McDaniel.
Kelsey, come on up.
Come on up, Pals.
All right. And as Kelsey's coming up, thank you. Again, what we want to do is preface this in a way where these are human beings. They are being put on the spot, so to speak. It's scary being up there, so I want to thank you very much for putting up with this. How do you want to do this? You want to go to the media first?
We're going to go to the media first.
All right, let's go to the media first, so...
We're going to take one question apiece from the media outlets, and I guess I would just ask that you identify yourself, which media you represent, just in case others in the audience don't know, and then go ahead and state your question for the candidates. Okay? Go ahead and say yours.
All right, my name is Sharice Keckley. I'm from the Observer. What do you propose the county does to alleviate the challenges with the jail capacity?
Okay, so here's, you know what? We missed a step. I apologize. Don't forget that question. Two-minute introduction. So we talked about a two-minute introduction. Now, here, so you guys-
It's the Bob Kavanaugh Show.
If I get a ticket and I show up in court, just be nice to me. All right. Two-minute introduction, and the idea was, you can say whatever you want. So we introduced Laura first, so Kelsey, if you would start us off with your two-minute introduction. The microphone, go and pull it out of the stand, and if, we've put a blue tape on the floor there if you want to step up. Give us your two minutes, and give us your intro, and then we'll have Laura do hers.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, evening, rather. My name is Kelsey McDaniel. For those of you who don't already know me, I am a native Oregonian, born and raised in Oregon. I started my legal career in Hepner, Oregon, in 2008, when I passed the bar in Oregon. I met my husband, Kyle, who's here tonight. He was born and raised in Hepner, Oregon, and grew up on a cattle ranch there. I dragged him over to Union County as, when I got the job as a prosecutor, as a deputy district attorney here in Union County. I have been a prosecutor in Union County and Morrow County, right here in eastern Oregon, for 10 years. That's all I've ever wanted to do. I have trained for it. I have worked for it, and this is my true life's passion. In addition to some of the aggressive prosecutions that we've done, we also have some outstanding services and programs that I hope to be able to share with you this evening. I live in North Powder with my husband, our rambunctious bird dog, Duke, and my daughter, Addie, who is actually turning 11 months old today. Unfortunately, she's not here. I hope that this evening you're able to ask us really in-depth questions about what the job entails, what we bring to the table in our experience. You will find that I'm the only candidate who is endorsed by law enforcement officers currently serving in all three local agencies. I'm the only candidate who has ever tried a jury trial in Union County or even appeared in Union County Circuit Court. I'm the only candidate who has the honesty, integrity, and hard work that has developed longstanding relationships with our community partners to get things done. We're on all of the different MDTs and meetings in order to make sure that we are working together to keep the community safe. We do what we need to do to keep victims the center of our prosecutions. We put the people in prison who need to be in prison, and we expand our services to try to better serve the citizens of Union County. I am honored to serve as your district attorney, and I ask for your vote to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey. You've got two minutes.
All right. Excuse me. My name is Laura Eckstein, and for a very long time, many years in fact, the voters of Union County have simply not had a choice in who represents them as their district attorney. Now, not only do you have a choice, I'm offering you a clear alternative. There is a fundamental difference of philosophy and also leadership styles between myself and my opponent. Here in eastern Oregon, I started coming here in 2010 and relocated permanently in 2013. I'm very proud to be a Union County, Oregon resident. But we have a particular way of doing things. We are independent. We like honest, hard work, and we do not like it, and we do not appreciate when people from Salem or from the West Side try to dictate what is best for us here in Union County. Thank goodness, our district attorneys and the sheriff as well are appointed, excuse me, not appointed by the governor, but are elected directly. As you know, our sitting DA was originally appointed by Governor Kitzhaber and then ran unelected, so it's time now, we have the opportunity to go head-to-head and determine who best represents Union County. Let me introduce myself just a little bit. My family's here on the front row, some of them. Between my husband Brock and I, we have seven children. I've been an attorney almost 20 years. I've been a prosecutor. I've been a defense attorney. I've worked for federal judges in Washington DC and Salt Lake City, and I am currently a judge. My platform is simple. First, you back the blue. We have exceptional law enforcement in this county, very professional and high level. They have our back. We need to have theirs. Second, it's vital that a district attorney understand the constitutional role and not usurp functions of other branches. You have to stay in your lane to the fullest. And third, I call it the broken window theory. We need to prosecute crime consistently and aggressively from the time it is small. That sends a message to our communities that we will do what it takes to keep you safe, and to criminals that we will not tolerate crime in this community. I urge you to stand with me and vote Eckstein.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and go back to questions from the media. Sharice, if you can take that one, and then the order in which we'll go will be Laura will start, correct?
So let's just, yes, so Laura, you'll start the questions section, and then we'll go that way.
Okay, thanks.
What do you propose the county does to alleviate the challenges with the jail capacity?
I'm so glad you brought that up and that we're talking about that right at the beginning, because I consider that to be one of the most important and pressing issues facing the criminal justice system locally. As everyone, I'm sure, is aware, are, we have a dismal situation at the jail, and that's to no fault of our law enforcement, because I know our sheriff has tried to lead out on that. It's a pressing issue because it ends up having a ripple effect in the community. It puts serious pressure on law enforcement and how we can aggressively prosecute them. But I have to emphasize that this requires a great deal of leadership. Because this is a complicated issue, there's financial and many logistical issues to consider, I am committed to working with our sheriff, to working with our county commissioners, to working with the brilliant minds in the community economically and across the board, to think outside the box and find creative ways, because it's not optional. We can't continue to punt this problem down the road. It's imperative that we move forward as soon as possible to work on solutions, because we have to have a new jail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelsey?
Thank you. Well, let me tell you what I'm already doing about this. The law requires that you take the grand jury through every correctional facility in this, in the county that you are residing, once a year. When I got elected, I started taking every single grand jury through the jail to see what the situation actually looks like. Then at the end of that tour, they fill out a multi-page report that is submitted to the commissioners, the presiding judge, the jail commander, and the sheriff, and that is documented and submitted every two months. So I am personally doing my part to make sure that our citizens are aware of the circumstances that they're dealing with. In addition to that, that we're making sure that the people that are the stakeholders in this are also aware of what the citizens think about this issue. The sheriff has also asked me to help him in putting together the committee that's working on this. I've also helped him, and we've worked together to put together a report that I understand is going to be released in the near future regarding all of the stakeholders and their positions on the jail situation. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey. Next media question, Travis.
Thanks for being up here, guys. Travis Finger with Pacific Empire Supertalk Radio. We've all been in career settings, and we've all had ups and downs, but my question first off here is, what is a lesson from your career history that will translate to a success in the role of DA?
Kelsey, you'll lead with this one.
I think anytime you are a trial attorney, you learn every single time that you set foot into the courtroom. There's always something that you can do better, that you can do different, and that you should learn from. There's a reason, and this is a lawyer joke, so bear with me, but there's a reason that we say it's the practice of law. It's not the perfection of law. Everything that you do is developing. So I would say that I probably have learned the most from the cases that I've lost. A prosecutor who wins all of their cases is not a good prosecutor, because you have the authority to dismiss cases. If you are trying the hard cases, that means that you're continuing to learn. That means that you're going into the courtroom and fighting for what's right and letting the system work. And I think that those are the experiences that I've walked away from, learning the most about our system. Even if I disagree with the jury's verdict, because I trust it, and I think it's an important and fundamental part of our system, you learn from that and how to do better. And as a leader, that's also how I train my deputy district attorneys to learn in the courtroom as well. Watch each other. Learn from the juries. The judges are great about giving us feedback, too.
Thanks, Kelsey. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that question, because it did make me reflect back on a lot of years, like I said, almost 20 years of practicing law. And I had a particularly poignant experience on a case that was very difficult for me. It was a child murder case. I, at that time, was a single mother of four young children, and I had a hard time bringing myself to even read the autopsy. I was having a very difficult time being objective and trying to make sure I did my job in a professional and effective way. When I met, at the jail, I met with this individual who found himself charged with first-degree murder. And as I sat there, across from him, I reflected and realized that human element that we can never forget. That person that stood there, sat there, he made a series of choices, and he was in a horrendous situation, had caused enormous pain in the community. And I realized that you have to always remember the human element when you're dealing with the criminal justice system, period. Now, with that being said, the role of the prosecutor is to absolutely push that prosecution all the way and allow the defense to do the same.
Thank you, Laura. Our next media question?
Thank you. My name is Brayden Way. I work for Elkhorn Media Group, and my question for you guys is this. The opioid crisis is a huge problem. Methamphetamine use is rampant. How will you respond as DA to the problem of drug abuse in our community?
Laura, you're up.
This goes to what I mentioned at the beginning, and I really look at this from dealing with, you have to deal with things when they're small, especially when you're dealing with addiction. And we have an excellent drug court program here, but when you're dealing with a crisis of this level, you have to take it seriously. And I know a lot of prosecutors are of the mind that we don't want to put people in jail who are drug offenders. However, I do differ with that in a lot of ways, because I think we have to send that message, that we will not tolerate the violation of the law, whether that's drug or not. And I understand that it is complicated, but we have to deal with it at the first offense, sending such a clear message that it's not worth it to reoffend, and we're not going to allow the revolving door, whether it's a drug offense or not. I also believe that it is not helpful or merciful to a defendant, particularly a drug defendant, to keep them going around and around in the system. They need to have full accountability for their crimes, so they have an opportunity to address the issue and hit that rock bottom and get the help that they need.
So I've been on the Union County Treatment Court Steering Committee for several years now, and our treatment court has an outstanding success rate. If you ever talk to Judge Russ West, he will tell you all about the successes of the treatment court program. Now, there are some things, and this is part of what I love about the campaign, is getting to educate voters and citizens about some of the limitations for what Oregon law allows us to do and not allows us to do. You may not know this, but it is impossible to send someone to prison for possession of a controlled substance. It's great to say that you're going to hold them accountable to the highest level. What that is, is 10 days in jail. And that's what Oregon law is. The district attorney's role, because we have to follow the law, whether or not it's something you agree with or think is best practice, we have to follow the law. So that's why we've put a lot of emphasis into treatment court to try to address those offenders. The other thing is, is that treatment court best practices is for high-risk offenders, not first-time offenders. Those are the people that are the most dangerous in our community, and we're trying to get them help, so that they're not a part of that problem.
Will Bowman.
Will Bowman, LaGrande Live. So having chatted with both you ladies individually, I've realized that you're both very, very busy, and you have both told me that you can't do it all. So my question for you is this. What are one or two of the biggest issues you see facing Union County regarding your position, and what community organizations and resources do you intend to use to make progress towards solving them?
Kelsey, we'll start with you.
Okay. Well, I have one big priority on that. And the biggest issue that we're having, and if you ask anybody who works for DHS, CHD, or any of our local law enforcement, it's the lack of services available for mental health. We have the same population that each of our agencies is dealing with differently, and we're dealing with them regardless. We need to figure out a better way to deal with them, instead of pushing them into the criminal justice system and hoping that the jail fixes them, which is not going to work. So what I'm doing on that is I have started a mental health court steering committee. We've brought members from the Grand Ron Hospital. We've brought parole and probation, CHD, law enforcement community. We've brought parole and probation, CHD, law enforcement community. Lieutenant Bell is on that particular panel as well. We're working together to find a better way to treat these people who we see over and over again, and then are really depreciating our law enforcement resources when they're really crying out for help. We end up putting them into the jail, and you can ask Sheriff Rasmussen, the jail is not equipped to handle that. The jail is not a mental health facility. And that's the biggest crisis in terms of draining resources and not using our services the way that we should.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we've heard from our media. Thank you. Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize.
Sit down.
Oh, my goodness.
Laura gets to speak.
You know, carried away there. Will the audience...
Please excuse Bob.
I know. It's all excited.
Bob has been taking a lot of cold medicine today, so please forgive him.
Go ahead. There's your minute, Laura.
Okay. There are two main things I would identify. First of all, we've already talked about the jail, but that is absolutely a priority. That's something, like we've already mentioned, I will be leading out on and working with all the community partners in that. But I think there's another issue that needs to be discussed, and that is a leadership issue. I believe that we need and deserve a better level of communication and respect between the district attorney's office and all entities and citizens that interact, including law enforcement. I am absolutely committed to bringing a new level of leadership that involves respect and open communication and transparency. I plan to create a position within the district attorney's office to actually be a liaison to communicate openly and frequently with law enforcement, with the public, and with the media. I believe that, as a public servant, this is what the people need and they deserve, and I am committed to doing that.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay. Now, we go.
Now's the time.
Thank you. There is some water, there, guys, too. If you need some water, please help yourself. Okay, this is now your time. And we've got the pump prime, so to speak. We've got some people walking around with microphones. So Sherri here has a microphone, Will Bowman has got a microphone, and Travis Finger has a microphone. So what we want to do is give you a chance to ask just about anything you'd like. We'll do our best to get around and make sure we can hit as many of you as we can and get your question out there. We do ask that you not take the microphone away from the people holding the mic. They're going to hold it up where it needs to be. If it sounds funny, just go with it. Our sound guy will control that. All right, with that said, what questions do you have for our two dynamic candidates?
Oh, come on, people. Okay.
So let's get on out there, guys, with the microphones. I think it's because you're standing here. Okay, go on out in the crowd. Sherri, go on out. Will, Travis, go on out. Let's go.
Justin Casey. All right, nice and clear, here you go.
Yeah, I just want to ask, there is a law that they're pushing for right now in the Portland area for guns, to ban all guns. I want to know, if that law passes, how do you stand?
Okay, so we'll start with Laura.
Let's just start out with something light. Thank you. First of all, just so you understand where I come from philosophically, I am a huge Second Amendment supporter. I am personally a competitive pistol shooter, and I'm a member of the NRA. So with that said, I understand that the oath of office requires us to enforce the law as it is written. But I also understand that the first law that we say an oath to is the Constitution. So clearly, we have a supremacy clause within the Constitution, and those laws have to be interpreted within that context. So where I come from philosophically is strongly pro-Second Amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
So I'm assuming you're talking about Initiative 43, which I absolutely oppose. Part of what people I don't think realize is the definition for assault weapon in that actually includes semi-automatic pistols, of which I own several. I don't think you want either of your district attorney candidates to potentially be a convicted felon if that initiative passes. Now, having said that, I will tell you how your local law enforcement deals with situations like this, when Salem does dictate something that does not reflect what we in eastern Oregon know to be true. We sit down in a room together with the judges, law enforcement, Legrand Police Department, Oregon State Police, the DA's office, and the sheriff's office, and we sit down and decide, how are we going to deal with this? What are we going to do about this? And together, we develop a policy of how we're going to uphold the Constitution, follow the laws of Oregon, but do so in a way that reflects the constituents and the citizens of Union County. And I think it's always better to make decisions collaboratively, and I trust my community partners, and they trust me. And that's how we've handled those situations. We just had a meeting last week on the same kind of issue.
Thanks, Kelsey.
So if you have a question, feel free to stand or raise your hand.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question about the sheriff's department. Thirty years ago, or a little longer, when we moved into the valley, Union County bought and paid for a new sheriff's office, a building over here. And at the time, it was advertised that it was built big enough to add a story on top. So why are you looking at someplace else to put it? Put a second story on it?
Kelsey, you'll start this one.
Okay. So, in my work with the sheriff about this, and I take the grand jury through the tour every two months, so I'm well acquainted with those limitations. Unfortunately, the structure has not upheld the test of time like it was supposed to. So if we actually tried to build up on that, it would crumble. We're already suffering from black mold in that particular building. And in the basement, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, Boyd. Okay, in the basement, we can't use it either. It was originally designed to be some sort of a work center, or something similar to what they have in Baker City, which would be work release. And we can't use that either, because the plumbing has some issues, and so it's not sustainable. So I don't have the solution at this point. I don't think Sheriff Rasmussen has a solution on where we're actually going to be looking. I think the plan, and I don't want to blow up his plans on this, but I think the plan is to come to the community and talk about it as a collective group, about what the best thing to do is, the way to handle it, and the way to approach it. And that starts with this.
Thanks, Kelsey.
I'm actually agreeing with my opponent on this. I don't think we're stuck into anything about a second story. I actually don't think that's even close to being the best idea. I think all options have to be on the table. This is not something that's going to be solved by any one department. This is absolutely going to be a group effort. Clearly, it's the sheriff who runs that department, but at the same time, he has to have partnership from the district attorney. He has to have a good relationship with the county commissioners. And I hope that these questions are asked of them as well, because it's a very important issue to ask them as well. But there are so many brilliant minds out there that have ideas that come from the business community, the economic community, that we really need to tap those in coming up with a solution that we may not even have thought of yet. But we have to make sure, however we get there, we have to get there. Make that commitment together as a community.
Thanks, Laura.
Back here.
Yes, I'd like to ask both candidates to give a brief summary. If I missed it in the beginning, I apologize for asking again. A summary of your background, your educational background, where you've practiced law, and any history of any sort of infractions or disciplines by state bars in any state.
Ooh, good question. Laura.
Okay. I went to BYU Law School in Utah. Twenty years ago, I graduated. And I practiced there for about nine years. I practiced in private practice. I was a prosecutor there, and then a federal judge called me while I was at the prosecutor's office to become his criminal specialist. I handled all of his criminal cases and did sentencing guidelines. I went from there to Phoenix, Arizona, where I did criminal defense. I also did civil work in Arizona. While I was there, I did receive a bar complaint that was resolved satisfactorily for a bookkeeping issue. It was bookkeeping, excuse me, no client funds were misused in any way. That resolved satisfactorily. And when I moved to Oregon, and I got my license here, they passed me through with being fit to practice law, both ethically and substantively. And I am a proud member of also the Oregon State Bar. So I have bar memberships in Utah, Arizona, and Oregon. And I'm licensed to practice the United States Supreme Court, the Ninth Circuit, the Tenth Circuit, and a couple of other smaller federal jurisdictions.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Well, I'm a career prosecutor, so I have practiced law in eastern Oregon, and eastern Oregon only, and as a prosecutor. You don't hire an electrician when you need a plumber. I'm a prosecutor. I prosecute. I've never had a bar complaint that has been sustained. The only two bar complaints I've ever had were from defendants in prison, and I've never been disciplined by the bar. I think it's important that your district attorney have the utmost honesty and integrity. The district attorney's budget is over $800,000 to manage. That's an extremely important responsibility, and something that I know that the citizens have trusted me with, and I ask that they continue to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Bob, we've got a question over here. Bob?
I would like you both to give us your view of plea bargaining multiple felonies into smaller, lesser prosecuted cases.
Kelsey, go ahead.
So plea bargains are something that is kind of what I like to refer to as a necessary evil in the criminal justice system. We use them a lot, partially for judicial economy and partially because it's the appropriate and right thing to do. The philosophy that I lead the district attorney's office with is to seek justice, not simply convict. We hold offenders accountable to the highest level when they need to be, but we also take into consideration people's histories, the facts, and the background of the situation. There's so much complexity and so many ripple effects from every case that comes through our office. It's important that you have compassion when you look at it. Now, having said that, when there are people that need to be held accountable to the highest level, we do that, too. We also use something more readily in Union County than other jurisdictions, and we do what's called a settlement conference, where we meet with a judge, and both sides come together and basically see if there's some common ground. It's partially part of restorative justice, and is something that we use readily and have had a lot of success with.
Thanks, Kelsey. Laura?
I am of the firm opinion that we have far too much plea bargaining in this county, but the bigger problem is, and I agree that it is a necessary evil, and sometimes it is necessary, but when it is overused, it is an abuse of prosecutorial discretion. I think the far greater problem we have is the huge gap between cases that are submitted by law enforcement or complaints brought by citizens that are simply dropped. No explanation, no accountability. That is a massive problem that I'm committed to addressing, again, through accountability and transparency, to the media and to the public. When an officer has worked and worked very, very hard on a case and brings a case to the district attorney's office, that needs to be taken much more seriously with consistency to make sure we understand and that the public understands and the law enforcement community understands why these decisions are being made, and that they're communicated with respect and with transparency. So under my watch, I plan on being much more aggressive in taking those cases from submission from the police through to charging. And through, whether it ends in a plea bargain or a trial, there will be a whole lot more of that.
Thanks, Laura.
I'm sorry, your mic isn't on over there.
We're bringing another mic.
There we go. Will to the rescue. All right. Is it on? Okay. Okay, so building a new jail is a huge thing, and a huge cost for a small community. So specifically, what's the problem with the jail? And does it merit a new jail?
Go ahead, Laura.
The problems with the jail are well documented in a study that was commissioned by our sheriff quite some time ago. I believe that's one thing that we can get all the attorneys and all the law enforcement to agree upon, is how abysmal the situation is. So I don't believe it's optional whether to do it, but I totally agree with you that it's a huge undertaking. It's a huge financial undertaking. It's a huge logistical undertaking. But when you look at the cost, you have to weigh that against the cost to the community in having criminals released onto the streets, the real human cost and the financial cost that accompanies that. So the building of a jail, again, is not an optional thing. It's a matter of making sure that we have all the right people in the room to get it done in the most sensible way that has the least impact economically on the community.
Thank you.
Well, I was a contributor to that report that my opponent just referenced. I gave an interview to help with that report. What we're talking about when we talk about the jail issue is that there's a federal consent decree that caps the jail population at the Union County Correctional Facility at 37. You cannot have any more people in there other than 37 people. What that means is, when we have offenders that go over that, that are dangerous individuals, or who are sentenced, or who are part of a sanction for parole or probation, we have to send them to Baker, Grant, or Umatilla County, and it's draining our funds, and it's a huge drain of resources in that. In addition to that, if we hit 37 and somebody worse comes in, they look at a matrix system to release someone out for no other reason other than that the jail is full. That's something that I know that the sheriff's office has struggled with every single day, because typically, if you look at the jail roster, we're always full. It's a rarity that we ever have a day that we are below the federal consent decree.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Bob, we've got a question over here. Bob?
You know, and if we can ask the people who are asking the questions, can you tell us your name, too, please?
Good evening, ladies. My name is Roy Henry. I'm a small business owner here in town. I'm also a member of an organization called Bikers Against Child Abuse. Child abuse, as you probably both are aware, is a huge epidemic in this country, both in terms of family-related child abuse and sex trafficking. I would like to know what your plans are to help limit that in our community and put an eventual stop to it, so that no child should have to live in fear that they might be abused or re-abused by their offender.
Kelsey.
Thank you for that question. I'm actually the chair of the Child Abuse Multidisciplinary Team here in Union County. And what that means is that we meet regularly with law enforcement, CHD, representatives from all of the schools, everybody who has an interested stake in any particular case or a family that we're concerned about. We meet to discuss their cases, their situations, and what services we can provide. In addition to that, my personal caseload is primarily child abuse, sex abuse, and major crimes. I'm fully committed to prosecuting, and when I say, when people need to be held to the highest standard or the highest aggressive prosecution, those are the people we're talking about. Just this last summer, I put a guy away for a mandatory minimum, 25 years was the base there, and we got well over that after a conviction. The eight-year-old victim was so brave. We worked with her for months in advance to get her ready for trial, and she did an outstanding job. And that's where I get my job satisfaction.
Thank you.
As a mother of seven children, I want to thank BACA for the great work that they do. I know you guys are incredible and leading out and being a very aggressive voice in a very needed field, so I want to thank you for that. As far as child abuse goes, we're talking about the absolutely most vulnerable victims in our community. And when it comes to prosecuting child abuse, we have to be careful on the plea bargaining. I have seen case after case in the recent years in this county where there have been appalling plea bargains given to the most vile offenders, and those are sex offenders of children. I think we have to have a far different standard when it comes to the violation of these children, because those offenders come out and they're still in their 20s or 30s, and they get revictimized by just their simple presence in the community. We cannot allow the leniency that's been happening with, even though they're getting some of the charges, it needs to be far more. We cannot negotiate and allow this to continue when our children are at stake.
You know, I'm sorry, your mic's not working. So can we swap that out or something?
We got you covered.
James Tippett. I got a question on subject matter jurisdiction. And what happens when the subject matter jurisdiction isn't understood and a prosecution moves forward? What's the remedy for that?
Go ahead, Laura.
To any extent you're asking legal advice, I'm not giving that to you. But I believe I'm hearing your question to be, when you feel like a prosecution maybe is outside the scope of what it should be during, while it's going on? Is that the question?
Well, what is your understanding of subject matter jurisdiction?
That's the section of cases that are carved out that give jurisdiction for prosecution in any given jurisdiction. So if you're asking, what I'm hearing you say is, if there's a prosecution that's going on that you feel is inappropriate, what do you do? What's the remedy? And I believe that remedy would be an appeal. Is that your question?
Somewhat. The thing is, is when there is proof, factual evidence, that subject matter jurisdiction does not belong to the court that is prosecuting it, and it continues to move forward, how do you remedy that?
The constitutional remedy is an appeal. Have I answered your question? Okay.
Go ahead, Kelsey.
Okay, I'll take a shot at it, too. So if you're asking about if a case is filed, and for example, a defendant feels that they've been wrongly charged, or if there's a situation where there's more information. We're lucky in Union County that we have a good relationship with our defense bar. We have a good judiciary. The process works when it's gone forward, and if we file a charge and we hear information that is exculpatory, we'll dismiss the case. Our philosophy as prosecutors is to seek justice, not simply convict. And we have ethical standards that we're held to, a higher level of ethical standards that require that we not move forward if there's not probable cause, or if we could not prove our case beyond a reasonable doubt. So that's part of what we look for in the system itself, is if there is exculpatory information, if a defense attorney provides us with something, we look at that very seriously, and we take our canons of ethics extremely seriously as well.
Do we have any more audience questions?
Okay.
Oh, we've got one in the back.
Well?
And I was wondering if either of you know statistics on arrests and the trend, and then prosecutions and the trend over the last few years, and then how that might relate to the broken windows theory that Rudy Giuliani operated under in cleaning up New York City.
Well, I can't tell you the arrest statistics off the top of my head, but I can tell you about Department of Corrections prison intakes. Since I was elected, we have sent 15% more offenders to prison overall, over all of the subjects of crime. That'd be person crimes, domestic violence. These are all, we're talking about felonies here. In addition to that, we've increased the number of people we've sent to prison by 30% when it comes to property and repeat offenders for drug offenses as well. So in terms of what we're doing, in terms of sending people to the Department of Corrections, our numbers are significantly up. Does that answer your question, sir? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question. As you know, the broken window theory is part of my platform, and it's something I care very much about. It's something I've seen and experienced very much as a lawyer and currently as a judge. When we take care of problems when they're smaller, they don't have an opportunity to become larger. With respect to statistics, I think the real story is not in the number of cases we send to DOC, because that's a small portion of what we experience here in the community. The real story is the arrests and the complaints that are brought to the district attorney's office by law enforcement throughout the county at all the levels, and what happens in that huge gap between cases that are submitted and actual people who are being punished. And I can't give you those statistics, because the only person who knows them is seated here with me, and I don't have access to those. But I think transparency and accountability require that we have some information as to how many cases are being brought by law enforcement that are not being charged, because that is what we are living with in our communities day to day.
What other questions might you have for our district attorney candidates? So we've got, you asked one already. Do you have anyone who has not asked a question, who would like to know something about our district attorneys? Let me throw one, just, since I don't see any hands, and I know you guys have one more. You've talked about philosophy. And so can I just ask both of you to talk about your philosophy as you administer justice? Because I've heard that said quite a bit as well. Can you, is that, that might be too heady, or it might be just too nebulous, but talk about your philosophy around administering justice, if you would.
I'm going to answer that on two levels. First of all, from a legal standpoint, I am very traditional in coming at it from accountability. I don't believe that it's helpful to the community or the defendant. I don't believe it's merciful, as I kind of alluded to earlier, to go so light on crime that we avoid a consequence of one's actions, because a person can only self-correct to the point that they actually have a consequence. So I believe actually the more merciful thing is to have straight-up accountability. So that's my philosophy. It's a very old-school conservative philosophy, and that's what I intend to bring to the district attorney's office. Another aspect of my philosophy is, again, with leadership. I believe that people respond better to leaders who are respectful to them, who have open communication, who have open dialogue. You do not have to agree with me, you're probably not going to about half the time, but you'll be heard. You have a place at the table. Where you come, where you're coming from, you're an expert in that, and you deserve to be heard, and you will be heard. And I believe as we have that respectful environment, we'll have a whole lot better results.
Thank you.
So I think I've mentioned it two times before, but my philosophy and what I bring to the district attorney's office is that our canons of ethics, which are set for us by the American Bar Association, is to seek justice, not simply convict. We look at each case individually. We know that these are people. These are citizens that we live with in our community, and it's important that we treat them with respect. And I will mention as well, I think it's important that the district attorney, as living in this community, as invested in the community, where I and my husband choose to raise our daughter in this community, don't just stop at putting people in jail. Sometimes cases come towards our, to our office, and there are no winners. There is no way you can turn back the clock and make things all better for someone. So the best we can do is help them get through this horrible process. I always say, nobody goes to the DA's office on a Wednesday just to see what we're up to. Like, nobody's there because they really want to be. So the best thing that we can do with our outstanding victim advocates is help them get through the process with victim-centered prosecution and know that they have experienced attorneys backing them.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Great, thank you. Okay, so our official timekeeper, I think we're there. Are we there?
We have a question back here that has, from someone who hasn't asked one yet.
Okay, we've got five minutes left for the session, so go right ahead.
I can't live down the fact that I'm not a lifelong Oregonian, even though I came here in sixty-nine. How long have you been in Oregon? How long have you been licensed practice law in Oregon?
Go ahead, Kelsey.
Aside from when I went to University of Washington and Gonzaga University School of Law, I am a lifelong Oregonian, and I've been licensed in Oregon since 2008, when I passed the bar and started prosecuting in eastern Oregon in Morrow County, in Hepner. I was one of two attorneys there, so this place was huge. I was really excited to come to Union County. As I mentioned, we live in North Powder, and it's such a great mix for my husband and I. I can go out for dinner, and he can go fish on the same day, and we can all meet back in the evening and have dinner together. It's just the greatest community, and I feel so privileged and honored that I get to work with these outstanding people, great community partners. And I'm just so proud that this is where my daughter is going to consider her hometown. That's the greatest thing, that gift that I think we can give to her. And if I can help make it just that much safer, I will feel that I've been a successful parent and a good citizen of the community as well.
Thank you for that question. Like you, I am a transplant to Oregon. I am proud to have chosen Oregon to be my home. For many, many years, I had a real draw here. And when I first came through, I just knew that was where I needed to end up. And when I started visiting, I had to find a way to wrap up my law firm in Arizona, because all I could think of was getting here. I needed to come to the Blue Mountains, and I did that successfully. So again, I have, I mentioned I have bar licensure in Utah and Arizona. I am licensed in Oregon. When I, a lot of people don't know that a municipal court judge does not require an active license in the state that you reside in. So I had no reason to get my Oregon license. However, again, I've been an attorney continuously for nineteen years. It's kind of like when you move to a community and you've got to get a license. You're not a new driver. You just have a license in that state now. So I am absolutely proud to be here. My husband is four generations in Elgin, and we're proud in permanent residence, and I couldn't be more happy to be here.
Thank you.
I think, okay, we didn't hear the chime, though, to tell us we're done. So we've got this big plan. There we go.
Kelly has one job.
There we go. Thank you. That tone indicates our time for the segment is done. Do you want to go ahead? And we're going to do a two-minute wrap-up. Each of you will have two minutes. And again, unfiltered, uncensored, we've not asked them to prepare anything. And so with that said, I do want to thank you. And I think on behalf of the audience, we're very impressed. It's going to be a very challenging decision that I think our county's going to have to make. So let's go ahead and do our two-minute wrap-up, and I'm not sure who goes first. So I'm going to let you decide, Ms. Corinne.
Um, no. I don't want to decide. Who was the last one that finished the last question? Laura? Okay, go ahead and start, Laura. So as I mentioned at the beginning, you have two very different candidates. I always tell people, you know, I love that we're both female, we're both attorneys, we're both moms, we both live in outlying communities, but that's where the similarities end. We have quite a different approach to our jobs, and that's fantastic. It means we have a healthy democracy in action here. So I want you to listen to what you've heard today and do your own investigation, and we'll both be here to talk to you afterward. Listen to your gut instinct and think about how things have been for the last four years and whether you think we can do better. Because I believe that we can do better. I believe that we deserve better. I'm committed to helping be a part of that. We hear a lot, I hear a lot about, wow, the DA's office is so powerful. I'm not going to disagree with that, but I want to submit to you that the true power lies in the people. Like I mentioned, we don't have a system that is an appointed system. We have an elected system. I get one vote, Kelsey gets one vote. We're all the same. It's about the people, having their voice be heard, rising up and making a decision. And it's a powerful thing, and I'm honored to be a part of it. And I ask you to rise up, to have your voice be heard, to make the change that Union County deserves, and to stand side by side with me. I ask for your vote, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Vote Laura Eckstein. A round of applause for Laura.
So there were a couple of things that we didn't get asked about that I want to highlight really quickly. There are some things that my office has done under my leadership that I think are pretty extraordinary and unique to Union County. For the first time ever in the history of Union County, the DA's office, together with CHD and the Union County Safe Communities Coalition, put together a youth conference, where I see as one of my top priorities is protecting children. I think all of us agree that the children in our community are our most vulnerable citizens and something, if there's something we can do to help them to be more safe in our community, we should be doing it. We put together a youth conference for all seventh graders in the entire county to come together to address some of the issues that our community partners have seen as a problem. Bullying, sexting, unhealthy relationships, things that maybe the DA's office doesn't have a direct line to try to address, but something that we have a responsibility to deal with. We may have to deal with these kids eventually. So if we can intervene and try to deal with them in a positive way and give them the tools and the services that they need early on, that's something that we can do to avoid them entering the criminal justice system and then trying to put them in jail. That's not what any of us want for our kids or our relatives or our fellow citizens here. The other thing we've done is expand our victim services. We now have emergency services. We've literally helped people run, change their identities and get out of here, or change their identities and come here. We've done everything that we could to help DV offenders hide from their offenders and be safe in Union County. And then we trust our Union County law enforcement officers to help work with us to keep them safe. In addition to that, we've started a closed closet to make sure that victims are treated with dignity and respect when they enter the courtroom and access justice. These are little things that make a huge difference when somebody walks through my door in the DA's office, because like I said, nobody really wants to do that. I will tell you someone who does. I do. I do it every day. I love it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Thanks, Kelsey. So thank you very much, again. Can we give one more round of applause for their bravery to stand up and rally? So thank you. All right. Tough decision to make coming up. When the vote comes out, I'm not sure how we're going to make that decision, but I thank you again for your time. Come on down, if you will, and we're all done. There is another forum that you have agreed to do for some reason.
Because this one wasn't enough.
April fourteenth at six o'clock at the American Legion Post. So thank you very, very much, the two of you. I appreciate you very, very much. All right. So we have a quick reset to the stage, and now is where we're going to be talking about our county commissioners. And again, as you know, and Corinne and I were doing a pre-show on Facebook, live about our commissioners, that there seems to be, a lot of people are focused on this race. Some understand it, some don't. But we just want to take a quick split second. Of the three commissioners, two are moving on. That means we have one left, and that's Donna Beveridge. And so we've got two seats that are coming open. We have two candidates going for each seat. We've got quite the runoff here that we're going to be looking at. Tonight, you get a chance to ask them anything you'd like. We're going to bring them on stage here in a second, but we do want to talk about perhaps what they do and maybe what they are responsible for. So on the screen, we wanted to place up here, if we could. So here's a job description. They are the governing body, just so you know. And I think Mr. McClure would help us with this much more in depth than I could. But they are the administration, they have a lot of duties, they are the governing body, policy and legislative, as well as everyday ongoing challenges that our county faces. Some other things that you need to know as we go forward. Next slide, please.
And Donna would probably argue that there's a lot more to that job description than what we've just posted up there.
So Cody, can we get the next slide, please?
Bob, I think that's, I think that's your slide.
Did we not put up topics for discussion? Do we have that? So here's what we did. We'd met and we talked about some of the issues that our county commissioners face day in and day out. And this is a small list. There's actually a larger list, longer list than this. And so we wanted to get that up before you, so you could see it, to get you thinking about what they may be going through on an ongoing basis, as well as formulating some questions that you may have for our candidates.
And I think some of these are going to be pretty hot topics tonight, too.
I think so, too. Okay, so let's go ahead. I think we can introduce them at this time.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do it.
All right. So Ms. Kelly, we need you to pull and introduce our candidates.
Please welcome John Lackey.
John, come on up. All right, go ahead.
Please welcome Paul Anderes.
Paul, come on up. Steps are right in the front here. Come on up. Oh, go ahead, John.
Please welcome Matt Scarfo. And last, but certainly not least, please welcome Colleen McLeod.
All right. Again, just a quick refresher on the framework. If you can formulate your questions to about thirty seconds, candidates will have one minute to answer. Now, if we do come across a more complex question, we do have the flexibility to give a little more time to all the candidates, so we'll see how that goes. All right. With that said, should we get into the two-minute open?
Yeah, two-minute opening statements from each of the candidates. And as soon as everyone's seated, and of course, you guys got up there and you mixed yourselves all up, and so that's going to be confusing. So based on the order that we called you guys up, we're going to have Paul start. Paul, you've got two minutes to give us your opening statement.
Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Paul Anderes. I have lived in Union County for twenty-two years. My wife, Kelly, who's here with me this evening, my son Baron in the back, and our daughter Callahan is at Oregon State University. Unfortunately, I was not born in Oregon. But fortunately, a gentleman by the name of Pappy Ford recruited my father to come to Oregon to work in the timber industry to manage Roseburg Lumber Company. After high school, graduating at Roseburg, I went to work in the woods and went to Oregon State University. I worked in the plywood plants, worked in the grass seed industry in the Willamette Valley, fortunately enough to get an ag teaching job in Adrian, Oregon. And from there, I spent eight years. Great place to start a family, got married to my wife, and then moved to Union County, where, like I said, for the last twenty-two years, we've lived and chosen to live here. Both Kelly and I have had multiple opportunities to go different places to work, but we chose to be in Union County, to live in Union County. My priorities are young people, giving them opportunities to work in our county, whether they go to university or college, whether it be here at Eastern or somewhere else. Bring that education back and put it to work in our county. Job skills for those that choose not to go to college or university so that they can get entry-level jobs that will lead to family wage jobs. I think, like we just heard, I am also incredibly supportive of a new jail. What we've got is not working. I don't have a solution, but I want to start the conversation. The other thing is natural resources. I am a boots-on-the-ground from farm to forest, and I can speak firsthand on what our conditions are like in agriculture and forestry. I hope that you support me. I appreciate being able to have this opportunity to speak this evening.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Matt Scarfo, you're up.
I'm Matt Scarfo, and I am running for county commissioner. I am not running against Paul Andres or Colleen. That's been top number-one question in my book. Wanted to thank the two gals running for the DA position. Thank you very much for that. That was very informative. Only one complaint from the bar, Laura? I could, I mean, Bud could back me up. I get complaints, I get two bars. I get complaints all the time. Okay, all right, all right. Anyway, I'm from, is it still working? Okay. I'm from Phoenix, Arizona, originally. I moved here in 1995 to go play baseball at Eastern. I graduated with a degree in business economics, and I specialized in marketing. I then went on to work at Benchwarmers Pub and Grill, which then I ended up managing Benchwarmers Pub and Grill and the Long Branch Bar needs. I then purchased said places, and I started volunteering. That wasn't a joke, Will. So I started volunteering. Chamber, La Grande Main Street, I started getting involved in about every single 501(c)(3) organization that I could think of. I even started a charity golf tournament, which over the last eighteen years has raised over $100,000 for various charities. I actually, this is not my ID to become county commissioner. I've been asked by Union County. And after thinking it long and hard, you know what? I think I am going to be really good at this. And I'm not here for me, I'm here for you. And I always, always, after doing a lot of public speaking, one thing I always, always need to do is thank my wife, Lynn Scarfo. Yes. When she says, you're going to do this, and I said, yes, let's do this, she goes, meetings? Yes, meetings. So here I am. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Colleen, you're up.
I'm not going to stand up, because nobody in the back can see me if I do that. I'm Colleen McLeod, and I'm here to reapply for my old job. I did serve as Union County Commissioner previously, three terms, twelve years. We have a thing that we do in our house, which is if you're going to take on a task or a job, you do the very best that you can. We call it becoming a student of the business. And I became a student of being a county commissioner. And I learned everything I could through the Association of Oregon Counties, the National Association of Counties. And through that learning and associating with people that I wanted to emulate that I thought were doing a good job, I have written legislation at a national level. I was invited to present before a congressional senate hearing on natural resources. I was born in Oregon, lived in rural Oregon through my growing-up school years, spent every summer with my grandparents on Battle Mountain out of Ukiah. And both of those are incredibly rural. And I am actually, I consider myself a warrior for natural issues. And Paul touched on those just a little bit. Rural Oregon has taken a beating over several decades, and I want to come back and work on that again. I was one of the founders of the, Oregon, forty-one seconds, Oregon Rural Congress, which was the eight counties of eastern Oregon who got together, both Democrat and Republican alike, to do something about the issues that plague us that urban doesn't understand. If you look at the fact that Washington and Oregon and California rural counties are trying to divorce themselves from their states because of the issues of urban versus rural divide, I want to be back in there doing that great fight. And I want to thank my husband, Al McLeod, who's absolutely terrific and a heck of a sandwich maker. And thank you to the people that are sitting on this stage that have businesses, because it has been tough through the years to have a business and run for office. And so thank them, please.
John, you're up.
I'm John Lackey, and again, running for Union County Commissioner. Before we get started, it's a shrine custom. My wife, Virginia, is in the back. A wife, a beautiful lady, and a great backer of mine in my whole career. I feel blessed because I have had the opportunity to own and operate my own business for over thirty years. I've been responsible for all aspects of it, marketing, personnel, location, you know, payroll, all of the things that go with being an independent businessman. I had also the privilege of serving the country during the Vietnam War for seven years. My last duty was Battalion Operations NCO, responsible for the supply of everything... My last duty was Battalion Operations NCO, responsible for the supply of everything that a soldier needed in the field. We had 800 men and a couple of attached units in our battalion. The next thing that I was, had the opportunity to do is to serve seven years on a county planning commission, learning about land use laws in preparation for dealing with our ordinances, interpretation, planning, alternative use, and those sorts of things. After that, I also served five years on the Shrine Hospital Board over in Portland, probably the most fun and rewarding opportunity I've ever had, working with children, seeing them walk out where they couldn't even move before. It was a real blessing. In addition to that, I served four years as a city councilman, and feel that all of these various experiences have been in preparation for me to run and operate as your county commissioner. I ask for your vote.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
It's media question time.
All right, so now we go to our media representatives to start our timeout, just to help get your thinking in tune with what your questions could be. So let's start down with Sharice there at The Observer. Starts off.
So as commissioner, your job is to represent the people in the county, those who voted for you, those who did not vote for you, and those who did not vote at all. Are you willing to hear all sides of an issue, everybody who's willing to talk to you, before making a decision? And give me an example of how you've done that in the past.
Okay, so we'll start with Paul.
Thank you. A while back, my wife and I were leaving Walmart at about 9 o'clock at night, and we got into the car, and I looked around, and I said, "Kelly," I said, "if this comes to pass, that I win, these are my people." And when I first said it, I was thinking, "How do I represent these people that I don't know?" And what I did from there on out was I tried to make sure that I got to as many places that I could in Union County. I have not made it to Imbler nor North Powder's county, excuse me, city council meetings, but I've been to a lot of meetings. I've been to a lot of different city council meetings, school board meetings. And it kind of started out as a little bit of a joke, because I've worked in shops so long, my hearing is not good, but I listen very well. And I truly believe that. I try to weigh all the different sides, and I think part of that comes from my classroom experience, where I listen to what kids have to say and make decisions from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Scarfo, you're up.
This is actually an easy one for me. This is what I do every day. Everybody eats. I have two restaurants. I have never brought politics into my businesses, ever. There's only been two times where I've actually put the news on the TVs in there, to tell you the truth. One was when we lost the lives of the grayback crew, and when 9/11 happened. Everybody, how am I going to put this? You have to take care of everybody. I cannot look left, I cannot look right. It is everybody in Union County. I will sit down with anybody and chat with anybody, and a lot of you know that. I've not said no to anybody. I will listen to everybody, because that's what I do. That's what I do every single day in the restaurant industry. And that's what I've done on the Chamber, and that's what I've done on Main Street. And that's what I do. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Colleen, you're up.
Commissioner McClure said something to me once that was, "Every decision you make's going to make half the people in the audience just hate your guts." So with that in mind, the issues that I talked about before and the issues that I focus on are not, they're not conservative, they're not liberal things. They're things that are affecting everybody in rural Oregon. And I have conservative supporters, I have liberal supporters. I am a conservative. Apparently, this is nonpartisan, but it's too small of a community to have people not know what your beliefs are. But if you are honest with people, and they know what you're going to do, and you do the same thing every time, and when they ask you a question, you tell them that, I just want, I want politics to be people that don't try to beat around the bush and tell you, not tell you what the answer is. So I've been proud of being able to be outspoken and say exactly how I feel about things, because I think people can take you for your word then.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
John.
The most important thing in government is to be a representative of the people. What I think doesn't really matter. What you think collectively is what drives us. It allows us to get input from a very diverse number of sources. It's very important that we get those communications. For the last nine months, I've been putting articles on Facebook dealing with issues. But your representative and being a representative of the requirements of the job are part of what it's all about. The important thing is bringing experience, bringing value as a person, and trying to work within the confines of our budgets, our ordinances, our laws, and regard for our individual citizens.
Thank you, John.
Next media question.
Yes, thank you for your answers there. Okay, there's a great cross-section tonight of people from this community in the county in here that are curious about a lot of things. As a business operator, and I know others share this opinion, because they have a lot of conversation, and here's my question for you. Within the reality that, being a commissioner, being in the commissioner's seat, there's a lot of housekeeping that has to be done, just for the sake of the county, okay? That's just general housekeeping, and I hear some of that coming out, and we know that exists. But my question is this: Do you see a need for a shift in the direction of Union County? And if you do see a need for that, within the reality of that, what would be your first priority? Because I think, and there's a lot of people with this opinion, and being an operator, we don't see a lot of direction. We see a lot of housekeeping, but is there a vision out there? Because we need an inflection point. And what would be the priority of that inflection point?
Matt, you kick this one off.
I think Colleen's going to answer for me. A shift in the direction, like where's my goal going? Okay, I think I got her. I would say, being in downtown and having the two businesses downtown, economic development. Every, I see more and more stores closing. Pretty soon, there's going to be nothing but restaurants and places to socialize down there. On Main Street and Chamber, we always did surveys. We did surveys about, what do we need in downtown? What do we need over here? What do we need here? What do you think? Those surveys, I think, are done. The surveys we need now are, what are the last 10 things you bought online? What are the last five things you won out of Union County to buy? We start losing commerce, we're in trouble. We need to bring something else in. I don't know, bigger jobs, manufacturing, something, but we're losing something over here, so we got to bring it up over here. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, man.
Go ahead, Colleen.
I don't understand the order.
I'm not, I did 12 years of economic development, and every, you know, we have the strength of having 84 go through here, and we have some pluses, but every community in Oregon is trying to do economic development. And part of that is because all of the rural communities of Oregon and beyond have been hammered by regulations about natural resources. The traditional businesses of rural Oregon towns has been hammered by decisions made from afar. So everybody's trying to do economic development. I think the strength of economic development in every community is building up what you have. Find somebody that wants to do a business. Don't keep trying to get somebody else to come, because they don't have any investment in the community. It is hard doing economic development, but I kind of favor finding people that want to grow their business, and actually work on some of the things that are our traditional economic development drivers, and building those up, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lackey.
Yeah, this is a great question. I was on the Union County Economic Development Board for a period of time. Very disappointed that we made little or no progress. I'm pleased that we are now looking at it from a totally different approach. My estimate of how we might move ahead is to embrace those businesses that are already here. The things that we're benefiting from is they are here, not deciding to come or not. They're established, they own property, they hire people, they buy goods and services from within the community, and they provide profit invested back into the community. For the last 40 years, we, or few years, we have been trying to get new businesses into the community. What we really need to do is support those businesses that are here, because as they grow, they will bring in additional businesses, and we will have expansion. It's essential that we...
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
These are all very good points. What I would, the way I look at this is that, when I think about economic development and what I've watched since I moved to this county, is that we're always trying to hit a home run. And I'm not a baseball person, but I'm thinking that maybe we can get a series of base hits and score runs that way. And what I'm talking about is potentially taking some of the natural resources and some of the agricultural products that we've got in our area and add value to them. Light manufacturing, taking some of the, we grow some of the best beef in the world, and I am not exaggerating when I say that. If we can get it processed here, marketed here, there are markets out there that would love to have our beef. We grow great wheat, we grow, the grass seed is very well-established, but I think some more marketing there could be helpful to the growers. And all those things, I think, will put the money and the business in the downtown businesses, and hopefully, we can get a series of base hits rather than a home run.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
We have our next media question.
Yes. All right, so given the world that we live in with all of its constant technological advancement, my question for you guys is, what role do you feel technology might play in your work as county commissioner? And what kinds of problems might you be able to solve with technology?
We start with Colleen this time.
Actually, there is, the county is pretty advanced in technology. I think we have children, so we can have technology. Actually, the county has been working on that for a long time, and it's kind of required because of the federal-state local government kind of connection, stuff like that. But I find the county advanced, but you know, I'm of a generation that think we need children so that somebody can fix our computers.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thanks, Colleen.
You're welcome.
John.
Yeah, technology is probably the fastest-moving influence upon how we operate, whether it's government, private enterprise, or anything in our lives. 20 years ago, probably, there weren't five people in the room that would have a cellphone. I bet there aren't five people in the room today that don't have a cellphone. So the important thing, though, is, as technology advances in all areas, we need to support our employees, we need to embrace continuing education, because employees are our most expensive cost of running government and business. And if we don't keep those people performing at the highest possible level, they will fall behind, and we will fall behind in not only the efficiency of our operations, but the services that government supplies you, the citizens of Union County.
Thank you, John. Paul.
Thank you. Just, this hit home to me the other night when I was at the Union City Council meeting. They're working on getting better infrastructure for their technology. La Grande was fortunate enough, through the work of Commissioner McClure, he really led the fight to get high-speed internet here. I think, as a county commissioner, one of my goals would be to try to get that higher speed to the outlying communities, Powder, Union, Cove, Imbler, and Elgin, and Telecassid. The other thing that I think is, and today's news really brought that home to roost, is that information is power. And how we manage that power, and how it's presented to the people, and how it's managed or mismanaged, can have a big difference on how communities react. And I think that if we have direct access through technology to our decision-makers, whether they be in Salem or in Washington, DC, that's an advantage for us.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, those are, all three were really good answers. So, yep, technology, faster communication, very, very good things. So I will say, because everybody pretty much said it, if you call me, you email me, I will call you back, or I will answer. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thanks, Matt. I think that's all of our media question. Oh, no. Hello, Will Bowman.
Trying to skip me, because my sign fell down, aren't you?
Sorry about that. Go ahead, Will.
So this question actually ties in a little bit with Brayden's question. I talk to a lot of people, generally, as a part of my job, interviewing people about really cool, new things that they're doing. New and exciting businesses, and organizations, and programs, and they're all extremely cool. But one of the other voices that I continually hear in my interviews and people that I talk to is a voice that is concerned with the loss of what is already here, the loss of the old, of the past. And as Union County residents, I think we all are very well acquainted with the fact that we do have very deep roots here. How do you, how do you intend to balance encouraging and growing the new and growing the tree without neglecting the roots? Promoting the new without forgetting the old?
John Lackey, you get to start with that one.
Are you talking about technology? Do you start with technology?
I think it's just more of an, I mean, technology is sort of a flowering of that, you know, technology, but I think it also relates to B2H, it relates to culture shift, arts, business, how we do things, just generally. And you can interpret it however you want.
The beauty of Eastern Oregon and La Grande is that we have a lot of tradition here. My approach to this job, this position, this manager's manager, it's not a popularity contest, it's who's best qualified to deal with the problems that are vast and deep within our community and in the government process. I think that we need to look at every department that we have, not with the idea of shaking things up or getting rid of anybody, but looking at what the intent of that department was, what was its function, what are we doing now, how can we improve it, what are our options, and where do we go from here? And you need to include the people that are in the job in that series of questions. What I feel and what my plan is doesn't matter. What we feel is what does matter.
Thank you, John.
Paul, it's you.
Thank you. As you were asking that question, I thought of a dear friend of mine and his family, and I go, to my agricultural background. His family started a Pold Herford Ranch in 1932. They have some direct bloodlines from the herd that his grandfather started, or their grandfather started. But at the same time, what they're doing now is they're using artificial insemination to improve that seed stock. And I think that you have to keep one foot in tradition, but at the same time, embrace improvements, because if you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always gotten. And I think, when you also look at some of the businesses in town that have been here so long, they've changed over the years, but the one thing that they haven't changed is their commitment to the community and their backing of so many community activities. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Matt Scarfo.
Welcoming the new and the old, right, Will? I believe that the old should be leading in welcoming the new. We've been here. We know the ropes. New business comes to town, we need to be at that ribbon-cutting. We need to be shaking their hands, "Welcome. These are the groups you need to be informed with. This is so-and-so, this is how this is done, this is where you need to do that. Do not step on that tree." Stuff like that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, man.
Colleen.
This is a, this is a great, big, wide, scary world these days, and I think everybody will agree that some of the things that have been happening lately make communities draw a little bit... a little bit closer in, to themselves. There, I've never seen this many people at a candidate's forum wanting to know the issues. I mean, it's probably six or eight times as many as I've ever seen. People are interested. The internet, we were embracing it. It was all new, and now we're finding there are dangers there. And people are drawing closer, and they're drawing their families closer, and they're watching closer to what happens to their family. And if anything improves a community, it's families getting together, watching what's happening, monitoring the new, but teaching our children about what is right, what has been right, what has worked, what some of us who are a little older miss. And I think, you know, that's the direction. You get new, but you need, I think it boils down to families and core issues. And I think that's a positive thing, just looking at this. People are involved.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thanks, Colleen.
All right.
It's audience question time.
Okay. So, thank you. Good questions from our media groups. Now, it's your turn. If you need to stand and wiggle for a second and stretch-
Get some refreshments from the back, too.
Feel free to do that. We're going to keep going, okay? So, we're not going to have a break time. The idea is, we're a family. We're close. Get some food, something to drink, and come back. So, now it's your turn. And what I'm hoping for, as a representative from the Chamber of Commerce, is that your questions are very poignant, where we can get some specifics. I think we have four excellent candidates here who have put their heart out on their sleeve, and they're here just ready to answer your questions. And so, that's what I am very excited about. So, we've got our roaming microphone people. Are you guys ready? Something tells me this is going to go quick. All right. So, now it's your turn. I'm going to be quiet, so take it away.
Okay, here we go.
Irene Gilbert. And believe it or not, I'm not going to comment on B2H. I hope someone else does. But I do want to talk about land use, and that is the Article 52, which is the land use rule about citing of wind farms in this county. There were four people who put together a draft of some changes that might occur with that. I was not one of them. So, my question is, I would like the candidates to specifically comment on, number one, if we have a land use plan such as Article 52, and there is an intent to modernize it or make some changes, exactly what process would you recommend to get the best product at the end? Not just philosophical, but these are the steps that I would take. That's my question.
Okay, Paul, you're going to start with this one.
Thank you. What I would do is, and I think I alluded to it earlier, is talk about it. One of the things when talking to former and current commissioners that bothers me a little bit about this position is because of the makeup of three, two people cannot have a conversation and discuss issues. And that bothers me. My suggestion would be to have work sessions, public comment during meetings, and develop a plan through hearings so that we could get people's input rather than working in a vacuum. And I will repeat that I'm really concerned about the fact that no matter who wins here, they can't have conversations between the two of them without breaking open meeting laws and building a quorum, or having a quorum. So, open meetings, work sessions, and hearings.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Matt, you're up.
Windmills. I was at that meeting, Irene. And boy, yeah, there's a lot of things that they're going over right now with Article 52. Distance of two miles, all this stuff. There's a lot, a lot going on right there. I really think, like Paul did say, we need some roundtables to make sure this is done right, done correctly, if we are going to get wind farms. It is just not, the county commissioners, in my opinion, for this. This is our county. I would love to have everybody in this room be a part of that decision, because that is a very, very, very big decision. We've had it on our ballots before, and it was a very negative result, that we did not want wind farms. So, I believe that the three county commissioners should not be making that decision on their own, and it should be the people of Union County. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Colleen.
Oops. You can't have a meeting of two as long as you invite the media, by the way. And you shouldn't be able to say anything that would not pertain, with the media there anyways, if it's a discussion about something like this. You ought to be able, invite the media in and talk about it. You can nod in the hallway, but he's absolutely correct. There's nothing like legislation coming down where an agency says to you, you will have an opportunity to comment. And that includes B2H. It includes everything else. Forest Service will bring issues in, and they'll lay it on the table, and they say, you will have an opportunity to comment. And you know by then that you have missed several meetings because there's been some decisions made. I am not familiar as much with area, what, Area 52. Wasn't that in, wasn't that where the aliens were?
I think we're talking UFOs.
Oh, it was UFOs, okay.
We'll get to that question later.
It is, it is community decisions, and it shouldn't be made in a vacuum, and it should be everybody's input. But it's all land use, and land use needs to be revisited.
Thank you, Colleen.
Last Wednesday, the commissioners had a informative discussion brought together by, or brought forward by Scott at the Planning Department. The windmill was the issue. We wrote an ordinance years ago, before we had any windmills, to govern the use, the effects, and the opportunity to have windmills if the citizens want windmills. What we found out after we have some here is that there were some flaws in that. So, we have an opportunity to go back and look at that ordinance, correct the flaws. The big concern that was on the table was that we govern well, and we look at all the aspects of the issue, but not so, but not create so many rules that we eliminate the opportunity to develop either wind or other types of alternative power.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Bobby.
Did we, did we get all four candidates to the answer? Okay. So, we've got someone, I don't know where you are. Oh, over here. Okay.
Again, Roy Henry. So, my question has to do with transportation. I actually have two, but I'm going to ask this one. As a seventeen-year truck driver and an owner of a trucking company here in town, I've been in every state in the United States operating a commercial motor vehicle. And I can tell you from personal experience, LaGrande is a unique place, as we all know, in terms of weather. During the winter time, last winter, we were shut down twenty-four times on the freeway. This winter, we were shut down twice. The problem that creates is that when they shut down the freeway, LaGrande gets inundated with people like me that drive trucks. As good as the Wallops are with Flying J, it does create overflow into other areas of our county. What kind of ideas would you have to help alleviate that congestion and give truck drivers like me someplace to park during bad weather times, where they have access to food, restrooms, and possible shelter if needed be?
Matt, you're starting this one.
No, this, this one was off the, that's a, that's a good question. Yeah, and thank you very much for doing that job. It's a very tough job. And I hear some, there's some more restrictions coming down the pike for truck drivers. That's going to, yeah, it's going to raise prices on everything. Trust me, I get a truck in my alley all the time. That's a very good point. I always see the trucks lined up every time the highway is closed. And I always wonder, boy, are you guys just sleeping in your trucks? And, you know, how do you get food? And how do you go use the restroom? I just thought of something. Maybe we could get the trolley over to just maybe swing by, say, hey, does anyone need to go downtown? Does anyone need to go shopping? Does anyone need to go buy anything? I think maybe that'd be a good solution. I don't know if that's kind of what you're looking for, but yeah, thank you for the question.
Thank you, Matt.
Colleen.
I was always told that closing the freeway was our tourism plan. I hesitate, as county government, to start setting up like RV places or something like that, because there's already that existing business. And I don't think county, county or any government should be in competition with, with existing businesses. But certainly looking at areas where working with existing RV parks, or motels, or things. And I think the trolley is a great idea for transportation. But I would hate to like build something that would turn out to be like an RV park, because I've seen RV parks in the area become angry because, well, Walmart lets trucks go there. That takes away from their business. So, it's, that's kind of a rocky place to go. But certainly, hate to think of you sitting out there, you know, at Flying J for three days on end and not having something to do, because there's lots of stuff to do here.
Thank you, Colleen.
John.
Yeah, we have some facilities here in the town, and they generate tax revenue that helps us with means of funding places where people can stay when they are passing through. This is not necessarily a function of the county commissioner. ODOT runs our highways, and I think they do a heck of a job. I would not want to be driving a snowplow in the middle of the night at ten degrees and have that job. They do a great job. I've talked to Greg Sip, our District Five, I believe, general manager. They have some additional funding that was brought to them this year. I think we'll see some improved equipment. And, you know, this is something that the good Lord controls. We don't. But as far as providing a place for people, I think it's essential. Trucking in the, is part of what we are.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Roy, I can only assume that this is, we are not the only place in the United States that this happens. I will tell you, I don't know. But I tell you what I would do, and I, I would go back to, I'm going to ask an expert. I'm going to find some places that has this problem and find out what they're doing. I, I don't have a solution right off the top of my head, but I think that, someone said it earlier, there are a lot of bright minds, and we can do some research, and we can find out what others are doing, rather than just going, oh, whoa, is me. I think there's some, some really good options out there that we don't know about. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We do have the-
Question here?
Sure, go right ahead.
Hi, I'm John Bozarth. Would you please tell us of your government experience, especially in the areas of budget and planning? And also, what do you consider your greatest strength for county commissioner to be?
Okay, we're going to start with Colleen.
I did it for twelve years. Budget and planning, you're involved in that every year thoroughly. There is administrative officers at the county who take care of that. But you are certainly involved in all, the department heads and all of their expenditures and stuff, and the decision-making in that. My biggest strength, I think, is experience and working hard at it. It's not a nine-to-five job. It's, you're gone some days for three or four days away from your home and family. And I've done that over and over and over again, because I am committed to doing that.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen.
John.
One of the blessings I've had is dealing with my own business, which was profitable. We had over $2 million in sales in insurance in three states. So, I've been able to balance my business budgets profitably in my business for over thirty years. The other blessing that I've had was being on the Board of Governors of the Shrine Hospital in Portland. We had a thirty-plus-million-dollar budget. I also was in charge of human resources. We had three hundred and sixty employees. Ended up as vice president there, and very much a believer in, in nonprofit organizations providing, providing funds. The other opportunity I have is county, is a city councilman was working with our budget. I discovered things in the audit, and I look forward to the $40-million-budget that the county has.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Paul.
I walked into Adrian School District a little over thirty years ago, right after ballot Measure Five had passed. They had just riffed two teachers. The staff was very unhappy that they had just hired a kid out of Oregon State University. I know what government budgets look like. At that point, I made it my job to figure out what school budgets look like, to find out where the spending sources came from, how they worked as far as which fund could be used in which particular way. Also, while in Adrian, for a little over the two years, I was city recorder. Complete control over the budgeting process with the, with the guidance of the city council. I built the budget. I made sure all the billings went out. I worked with utilities for franchise fees. The best, and to answer the second part of your question, the biggest asset that I bring to this is energy. I think anybody that knows me, whether it's through school or my, my work in fire, I work hard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Budgets. I've been on a lot of budget committees. And I enjoy budget committees. That's kind of weird. I also enjoy physics. I enjoy math. So, budgets are right up my alley when it comes to that. I haven't been on any government budgets, though. I've been on the Chamber Budget Committee, Main Street, Country Club, about every committee I've been on. My, my strength that I bring to the table, I'm a people person. Since I've started my campaign, I've seen a lot of stuff on social media. I've had some blowback because I do not put a lot of stuff on social media. If you say, hey, Matt, how do you feel about this? I say, hey, let's go have lunch. A lot of people have taken me up on that, trust me. And a lot of people have not. But I will sit face-to-face with anybody, anybody in this room. I will sit down and talk to you about anything you have. You have concerns, comments, anything. Like I said before, I will call you. I will email you back. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So, we're, let's take another question. I'd like, somebody with a microphone, have our Farm Bureau and Catlums Association on deck. I know that we've got some groups here tonight, so I don't know who is next. Oh, this, Catlums, there we go.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. It kind of boiled down to a couple of subjects for us, and they're relevant right now in the county, clearly. One of them's on the board, which is the wolves issue. You guys have read and heard about the stuff going on in Baker County, and of course, we've had multiple confirmations of predation here. So, the two W's, wolves and water. We have place-based water planning that the county's actually a convenor and got the grant. It's been a two-year process. Kind of curious, I guess, if you guys could explain your, you know, for the water stuff, it comes down to, we only have so much water. And are we going to need to split the pie differently to more recreation and less agriculture and municipalities? Where's all that? Where do you sit on that? And on wolves, of course, there seems to be two mindsets. Of course, there's people in the middle, but they're strong on one side or the other. And I wondered if you could maybe express some views on that. Thank you.
John, you're kicking this one off.
Thank you. Agricultural production brings in more money to this community next to, I believe, the RV business of any other product that we have. It's a very dynamic thing. It's been caused to be a very expensive business. But if we don't support our agricultural community and look for ways to develop the products that we already have, to get the other layer of profit in delivering them to, from the field to the consumer, I think we're missing on a great opportunity. The other part of that is wolves. ODF and W is in charge of the wolf management. I personally feel that they've been somewhat neglect in their application of their duties and responsibilities. In Naha, the other day, we had forty-two animals killed. The last thing is water. It ought to go to where the land. If you don't have water, you don't have crops.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Paul, go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, I'm a little bit surprised when I just looked at my watch. Three hours ago, five o'clock this evening, I had a conversation with Todd Nash and Mark Burnett. Todd is the county commissioner in Willawa County. Todd is the county commissioner in Baker County. Both of them are ranchers. They are on their way home from meeting with the press in Portland over the recent kills in Baker County. The current status of that is, they did an necropsy on the, the one wolf that was killed. It had a hoof inside it, so there is an additional kill that this pack had predated. And the opinion of these gentlemen that I trust, because Todd has been with the wolf issue since they arrived in Willawa County about ten years ago, is that if they become lethal and start preying on livestock, they need to be removed. Now, that's not to say that every wolf needs to be removed, but when they start preying on domestic livestock, there's a problem. And I just ran out of time.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Matt.
I need a minute on both of these, these topics. Good, good topics on the- Good topics on the wolves. I really don't know why we're protecting, they're not really endangered. I know Idaho would probably give us all their wolves if we wanted. But it would, when they're killing our cattle, and they're killing our sheep, killing our llamas, or those alpacas, yeah, no, no, wolves should not be doing that. That would be like someone coming into my restaurant and eating up all my hamburgers. And then someone says, oh, oh, hey, you got to let them do that. Hey, wait, 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 that's my livelihood right there. Okay, sorry, 30 seconds. Now, on water, we need to get you guys water. Water is life. We need water in this town. And it's tough for me to see all that water flowing right now in the Grand Ron River, 11,000 CFS right now. We get all the snow packs, someone told me, whether we're at 30% or 200%, you can walk around, walk across the Grand Ron River in July and not get wet. I'd love to see a way to slow down that water. I'm from Arizona, we trap all of our wa--
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
That is going to give me nightmares.
I know, and I'm sorry.
Thanks, Colleen.
Do the water first. As economic development-wise, we have backed off from some technology companies in the past because of the water usage, understanding that that is an issue and agriculture comes first. I am so glad you asked about wolves. I've had two at my place in Somerville. One in the pasture that backed down my husband, one that ran across. I spoke today to ODF and W's director and said, here you have, you're trying to make a guy up in Starkey, build a fence around his property so that the wolves won't come in. And I'm not built, I only have 40 acres, I'm not building a fence around that. And it's a dangerous precedent to start that you have to put them out. It's easy to love wolves if you live in an apartment in Eugene or Portland and you admire them being out there. But I want children to be able to go to the bus stop and not be attacked by cougars and wolves. People don't understand the danger of them as a neighbor.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
We have one right here?
So, I know we've got our friends from Elgin here, so Brock is here. Brock is the city recorder. And so, do you want to come down, let's hear from Brock here? Brock, come on up. I'll come to you.
Hi, Brock Exton. You spoke briefly, John, about the Union County Economic Development Board and it's what you call failures. I know that funding now is kind of up in the air for the county. You guys as new commissioners, what are your thoughts on that funding? Do you think that should be controlled by the county? Or do you think that should be dispersed amongst communities in the county to kind of focus on their local economy?
That's a great question.
Do you think it should be controlled at the county level or broken down to the city level?
Paul?
I think that we're looking at a case here where the stronger that each community is, the stronger we all are. I would like to decentralize it. Living in LaGrande, I know LaGrande gets a lot of attention, a lot of the news is here. Having gone to those meetings that I talked about, whether they be city council meetings or Lions Club meetings or any of the events that I've been to, there are a lot of really good things going on in our county and I think that we should support each other. And I would be in favor of decentralizing that rather than, and maybe bringing together, looking at the leadership team that's been put together with the mayors and move forward with that in a model that is sustainable for all of us.
Thanks, Paul. Matt?
Hey, Brock. I know you're going with this, you want some more money. That is something that, yeah, I'm not too familiar with if we can do that or not. The budget meeting for the Union County Commissioners is May 16th, the day after we vote. May 15th, make sure everyone votes in the primaries. So, May 16th, I wonder if that's going to be brought up or not? And I'm kind of curious to see how that actually works. But that's the best answer I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Colleen?
Are you talking about the funding that was designated for UCEDC? Actually, UCEDC never started out getting funded from government. It was the city fathers that got together that wanted to have private money to help add money, their money, to growing the economy because it helped their businesses as well. A lot of people don't like government doing economic development, but by nature of all of you voting for there to be a lottery, that money had to be dispensed some way and it was dispensed to counties to give money out to the cities from their portion and everything. So, just by nature of that vote, it made government involved in economic development. If there is no UCEDC and if there are no businesses that want to, you know, business fathers, mothers, that want to stand up and do that, I would certainly think definitely about helping the economic efforts of the smaller cities. That's a county function. That's one of the things that I've always seen was important. And, you know, the Elgin's been a good benefit of that, oh, I've got two seconds, in the industrial park and the clinic and all the things, so it's a good partnership.
Thank you, Colleen. You bet. I do deserve my music when I'm playing too. John?
Yeah. UCEDC has been funded by members who have contributed in their membership dues. It's been funded by money from the city and the county. It has not functioned well. We've been trying, the organization has been trying to do the same thing for so many years without success. We cannot, we, Union County, cannot compete with the world's economics. There are areas that give money, they give grants, they give real estate, they waive fees, they reduce utilities in order to bring businesses into their community. Geographically, we're not located in an ideal spot. We're not on the I-5 corridor. So we are penalized by bringing resources in and shipping goods out. I look forward to the new structure, whatever it may be. I think it's our greatest opportunity.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Okay, right here?
Okay, thank you. I'm Cindy, I'm from Cove. I'm a small business owner and a compulsive volunteer. And I'd like to stay on the theme of the economy. I know, I can see how easy it is to get stuck in the rut of conceptualizing Union County as LaGrande and vice versa. What steps will you take to grow the economy specifically in the wider communities outside of the LaGrande area?
Matt?
Perfect. Hey, Bob, do you have that other slide that you gave us in the email? That Steve McClure had in, by chance, this one?
No.
Oh, shoot, okay.
I apologize. Okay, what Matt's referring to is--
Stop my time.
Stop the time, hold on.
Stop his time.
And we don't want to give anyone nightmares on that topic. We did uncover where all of our county commissioners have a list of committees they sit on, it's quite extensive. We opted not to put it up on the screen because it was scary, to be honest. And it's pretty all-encompassing. So, Matt, let's get the time back up there and talk away.
What I'm holding in my hand right now, it's called the Union County Board of Commissioners' Primary Liaison Designations. So every year, each county commissioner, they split off all these committees. And Cindy, what I'm thinking and what I propose is, I know there's a lot on these lists and there's a lot that are going to be in our laps, but I'd love to add a few more things. I'd love to add our towns in Union County. I'd love to have, under Steve McClure, Elgin and Somerville. I'd love to have, under Jack Howard, Union and LaGrande and so on and so forth. And I would also love to see the mayors or a representative from each city council be at the county commissioner meetings also. Communication, communication, communication. And if this happens, I want Somerville. They got great burgers out there.
Thank you, Matt.
Colleen?
That's just kind of a repeat of what I was saying to Brock just now. It has always been the function of Union County and the commissioners to be an assistant more, not to LaGrande because of the tax base and everything, but to the smaller communities to draw them in. And we have had regular meetings in the communities and at the county level also to find out what's happening. And it's been beneficial. And I would say redo that again. I get Somerville.
Thank you, Colleen.
John?
Yeah. The, I've been to city council meetings for every city in the community, in the county. One of the things I discovered is that as astute as the local city counselors are in their area, they are not aware of the goods and services that are provided by the county. I agree with the comments that we need to get our government, our county government people into, back into each of the communities, find out what their wants or needs are, see what our resources are, see how we can help them and support them. I discovered that there was a lot of duplication in their efforts on things that I know are available through our county government. So I look forward to working with those folks and to try to bring county government to all of the communities. We are a county of several communities, not just LaGrande.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
So in my job as an ag teacher, I've had the opportunity to work with every county in Northeast Oregon, being the district FFA advisor and work and to see what goes on in their communities. One of the things that I would suggest is, like the others have said, is more and better communication, but also probably take a look at where we are with a function that I think is probably going to be growing here, and that's tourism. And with the tourism, I think we need to do a better job of highlighting the smaller towns. I understand that LaGrande's got a majority of the motel rooms, hotel rooms, I get that. But there are some things out in these smaller communities, the outlying communities, if you will, that are really, have a lot of good things going on. And as I started this process, I never dreamed that I would learn so much, going to the city council meetings and finding out the things. And I would love to be a cheerleader for those towns as well as the entire county.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
Okay, so, as we know, oh, I'm Heidi, I'm from Cove. I own LaGrande Dry Cleaning. Marijuana, recreational marijuana is legal in the state of Oregon. And there are a lot of us here who use it, and I know that. And it's already here, it's already happening. So, do you, so far, Union County has not agreed to participate in the revenue increases that come from that in other parts of the states. And also, the crime reduction that we're seeing is a trend. Do you support the approval of actually allowing recreational dispensaries in the county? And if not, how do you justify that in the face of the income that's available? Alternately, also, I'm going to make the same offer I made to Donna Beveridge a couple of years ago. If you haven't smoked pot yet and you want to, I will be your liaison.
Wow. Colleen? That one's yours.
I'm a child of the 60s and it's not as much fun as you think it's going to be. I can't, you know what, there's a whole lot of issues involved in recreational marijuana. I am a marijuana medicine supporter from way back. I think there are so many benefits that we miss with medical marijuana that could help cancer people and people in chronic pain, that the fear of marijuana has kept from developing. I fear that some of the marijuana that is around today is not your grandma's marijuana. And I talked with the police chief the other day about this, and he knows that I support medical marijuana. But I am unsure of what is available today is as safe as it could be. And I know you don't believe that. But I saw it ugly in the 60s, and I know you're too young to see that. But I saw ugly what it did in the 60s and it, anyway.
Thanks, Colleen. John?
Yeah, I voted for medical marijuana. I think, like any other drug, it needs to be managed. I'm very concerned about the possibility of having recreational marijuana in the community at this time. A report card a month ago in the paper indicated that OLCC does not have enough trained people to manage the marijuana recreational dispensaries. They don't have the skills and they don't have, and there's only one person for 82 or 83, I don't remember the exact number, marijuana dispensaries that each individual OLCC person is responsible for. They are not trained and they're not prepared. I think that we need to bring it to the vote because the people, if I'm going to be a representative of the people, I think we need to hear from the people. I think it needs to go on the vote. I hope it goes down because we don't have room in our hospitals, we don't have room in our jails, we don't have court--
Thank you, John.
--and on and on and on.
Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you. There is, I was raised conservative and there is enough of a conservative in me that I am not going to dictate to you what you do in your home that is legal in the state of Oregon. Having said that, I have a bigger issue and that is a clean and sober workforce for our industry, whether they're here already or coming in. And I'm not talking about just marijuana. The DA candidates alluded to it earlier. We're talking about methamphetamine, we're talking about alcohol, which is readily available. We're talking about opioid addiction, all these things. And I think we need to take a much bigger picture than singling out one thing, whether it be marijuana or alcohol. I think we need to have a very broad spectrum of looking at what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. And I think, to a degree, we're probably going to have to look at testing, especially as marijuana and medical marijuana come online for folks because, oops.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Matt?
Bob? I deal with OLCC all the time because I'm in the liquor industry. I am in the regulated liquor industry. I know for a fact that our police officers and our sheriff's department, and they receive funding every single year to maintain, to be trained, to have the proper people around to make sure that our kids are not getting alcohol. That's not in place right now with marijuana. I've talked to the chief of police, I've talked to the sheriff of Asmussen. They're receiving zero funding right now. Zero training, zero more help. Does that make sense, zero more help? Until they say, hey, yeah, we got enough people, we got enough things, we can keep this out of the reach of children, then yes, I will feel safe, I will feel okay. Marijuana is a good thing. I got something real quick, I jot it down. Also, since it's going to a vote, if the majority of the voters elect me for this position, I will always respect the majority vote in the future, whether I like it or not. Sharice, I could write that down for you if you want.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Bob, we've got time over here for, Alex has been waiting, want to get him in?
Hi, my name is Alex McCaddad. I'm the administrator of the Blue Mountain Translator District, which manages the television towers in Union and Baker Counties. As the only translator district in Oregon, we operate some very antiquated state statutes that haven't changed significantly since the 70s and require significant revisions. Local government legislation is difficult to pass without county support, a lesson the district learned in 2017 when a reform bill that was submitted to the legislature died without a single hearing. I want to know if you believe the county should help local governments advocate for changes and what you will do to ensure your local government partners can successfully fight for their constituents?
John Lackey?
As was indicated earlier, very well put by Matt, there are many, many issues. I'm not, at this time, prepared to address the question and I apologize for that. But in the decision-making process, I think it's very important that you have all the facts. At this point, I don't and I'm not prepared to make a knee-jerk reaction or answer a question that I'm not prepared to answer. The biggest concern I have about this forum is, and I respect everyone that's put it on and the sponsors, is that we haven't really had a chance to develop the questions that you're asking. The answers are much more complex than the one minute that we're able to answer. I've put together, back on my table, some brochures where I have addressed some of these issues in greater detail so that if, and I'm open to meeting with anyone, anytime about the issues. We want to represent you, the public. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Paul?
Thank you. Kind of a lead-off from the same as the last question, there's enough of a conservative in me. I'm not a really big person on rules. Dealing with rules and activities, whether it be at school or Eastern Oregon Livestock Show or any number of things, the more rules you put together, the more creative people get to find ways around it. Having said that, if the will of a substantial number of people brings something to the county commission, I am more than willing to hear what-- county commission, I am more than willing to hear what, what we have, what they have to say. I'm kind of a numbers guy, I mean, we're looking at ballpark 26,000 people in the, in Union County. If you bring me a petition with 50 signatures on it, I'm probably, I will more than willing to listen to you and very respectfully, but I think that you're probably gonna wanna get a little more momentum than that.
Thank you, Paul.
Matt.
I'm kinda with John on this one, the question was, you spoke very, very fast, but I do remember you at the county commissioner meeting a couple months ago, and you do, you guys, you're involved with pretty much the last TV station, public TV station, is that correct?
The last translator district.
Translator district, yes, yes, which, the last one in, I think, the nation, correct? Or just Oregon? In the state? Well, you know, thanks for being the last one. But as, as with John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on, kind of piggyback on John's answer, I do not know enough on that to, to give you a good answer, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Matt.
If you are talking broader about what we are willing to do, I spent a whole lot of time banging on doors and testifying in Salem, and banging on doors and testifying in Washington DC about the issues that affect us. I was told once by a legislator in Washington DC, county commissioners carry a lot of coin, which means that your word carries a little bit more than somebody, you know, just coming in off the street. I take that responsibility very seriously. And part of what we were trying to do as the Eastern Oregon Rural Alliance, the eight counties commissioners from the eight counties, Republicans, Democrats, is taking those issues together. We had a rural congress, we had it in Cascade Locks, so they would show up, we had senators and legislators and administrative heads listening to the issues of rural Oregon that affect us out here, and I've got 14 seconds. So, you have to be willing to work it, and you have to be willing to be away from your family and do the job, but it's worth it.
Thank you, Colleen. Way in the, looks like someone, I'm not sure who's next.
I'm your wife, I'm next.
There you go.
Well, she has spoken. All right, thank you for that.
I'm not running for public.
I can't argue with that, Bob.
I'm not running for a public position.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Warnes, and I work in the timber industry, and that is a huge issue for this local community. We're surrounded by 4.8 million acres of national forest, with over 75% of that being prone to uncharacteristic wildfire. And in 2015, we were inundated with over a month of smoke, as I like to say, I smoked a pack of trees a day. What, as county commissioners, how will you guys form a partnership with the Forest Service and work with the Blue Mountain Forest Plan, the upcoming potential Blue Mountain Forest Plan, if it doesn't get litigated, to ensure that our local communities can utilize the multiple-use aspect of our national forest here in northeast Oregon?
Paul.
Thank you. I don't think it's any secret, I worked for the Forest Service in the summertime. I have had my boots on the ground, I've had a chainsaw in my hand, thinning the, the forests that you're talking about. 2015, we had catastrophic fires all around us, a lot of that was on private ground. Part of my concern is that that supply of timber that's being milled right now is about to run out because of the age of it and when it was killed. Here's what I would do, I would, again, dialogue, and dialogue where I can speak specifically about what the problems are. I grew up in a timber family, my father was a forester, I teach forestry, I know it's broken. I can clearly articulate that we need to change. Last week, Senator Wyden was here in town, I asked him about it, and he, these are the words out of his mouth, "We need more timber harvest in an ecologically sustainable way." To get Senator Wyden to admit to that in that forum, I thought was huge.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, Paul, I'm actually shocked that you got him to say those two. I saw that, that was good. To deal with the smoke, I've had someone say, "Oh, I wanna, I wanna stop field burning by 2022," someone told me, I was like, "Well, we're, we live in an agricultural area, rural agricultural area, we've been field burning forever, we're not gonna stop doing that, that is very, very important." And someone also said, "Well, this gets so smoky in the summertime, because, oh, the wildfires." And automatically, I said, "Well, then you're for cleaning up our forests and thinning our trees." Well, no, I'm not for that. Well, it's kinda like the catch-22 here, mother nature will clean up her forests one way or the other. We can't stop it, it's called lightning. If we, if we want less fires, less smoke, then we need to thin, we need to clean up. I am for Boise Cascade, I am for Forest Capital, a lot of jobs bringing to our county. Thanks, Lindsay, for the question.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Colleen.
I think I have a pretty solid history of fighting natural resource agencies and trying to get more timber taken. I think we need to look for partners, I just read a thing this week, where the wine growers on the west side are very upset because they've lost all their wine because of the smoke. So that seems to me like a partner that we need to be addressing as, as that problem gets broader and broader. But Senator Wyden needs to say that on the west side, because he's said it over here every time he's ever come. This is, that's my passion, my passion is natural resources and the proper use of them by rural Oregonians, as they have historically, and correctly, and even increasingly better done. So, you have it, I'm your natural resource baby.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen.
John Lackey.
The truth of the matter is that we have good fires and we have bad fires. Bad fires are ones that are out of control and, and damage homes, communities. The good fires are those that clear brush, they put trace minerals back into the soil, they put, allow for organic matter to aerate the soil. The fires get rid of brush, allowing more area for animals, for our wildlife, for our deer, elk, the one moose we have in the county. So I think that, that although fires are, do provide smoke, if we're going to have fires, there's not a whole lot a county commissioner can do to change the smoke. If you're talking about public land use, I think we need to take back our forests and take back our BLM land, and make it more accessible to the people that own it, the citizens of Union County.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Back here. My name is Mike Rosenbaum, I live in LaGrande, and my question is a chip off the block of the last one. Primary responsibility of the Union County Board of Commissioners is the health and safety of the residents of the county. I'd like to find out your opinion or your understanding of the CWPP, that's the Community Wildfire Protection Plan for Union County, which we revised in the spring of 2017, and more important to that, and I stress the word proactive, what step would you take to make sure that everybody in this room, and everybody in the county, fully understands what measures to take if there's wildfire intrusion into LaGrande, Cove, Elgin, or Somerville, our most fire-prone areas? And I'm talking about where to tune for full information on fire weather, evacuation routes, medical treatment in case the hospital goes down, and where to shelter outside of the fire areas. And again, the Union County cellphone warning system is good, but those cell towers go down in a fire, everybody needs to know what to do in the event of wildfire intrusion.
Okay, I don't wanna, I, can you give us the question? You got a lot going on there. You gotta understand, these guys are up here sitting on a chair, trying to hear your question. What's the question?
The question was, your understanding of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan?
Perfect.
And your proactive measures to make sure everybody knows what to do in the event of wildfire, what you would do as a county commissioner.
Perfect, thank you.
Matt.
Well, first of all, we would need, excuse me, we'd need to come together and have like a little something like this, we definitely need evacuation plans, we need something in case of catastrophic events. When the fire happened over there by Cabbage Hill, it took out all of our power, and you're correct, everything goes down. We're out of power, how are we gonna, how are we gonna figure this out? I was stuck, I can't say stuck, because I was in Hawaii, I was in Hawaii during that missile crisis. And nothing was more terrifying than having a ballistic missile coming your way in two minutes, coming over your phone at 8:00 in the morning. The resort I was at did not have an evacuation plan for a missile crisis. It scared me, I had my son, my wife, and some other kids with us. It is terrifying, trust me, I only brought flip-flops and swimsuits. I wish I had a pair of jeans, boots, gloves, and, and a bigger knife, trust me. If something did happen like that, all of a sudden we get Morgan Lake, a big fire coming over the top, yes, where do we go? Does anyone know? No, we need a plan involved, and thank you very much for that question.
Thank you, Matt. Colleen.
I don't know if any of you remember the scare of 20K, you know, 2,000 everything, that the computers are gonna go down, and we are all gonna die, and we won't have food. Well, the county got pretty active on that, and I wrote a brochure on a lot of those, lot of those points, where to go, and it, that's been years, I know. I think you've touched on all the things that need to be done, Michael, but getting that information together in some kind of presentation, be it paper, be it online, be it on our telecommunications in the paper, and taking it to the communities and stuff, because, I mean, we are, county's been familiar with that, getting that word out. And read a book about EMP, if you haven't done that one yet, and teach yourself how to get prepared for emergencies.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen.
John.
Again, my apology, I'm not familiar with the document, but I know that we have federal, state, and local fire departments. As far as the management of fire, I would leave it to the experts. I do not have a background in fire science, although I was a volunteer fire department many years ago. I think that we need to rely on the expertise of those who are talented and experienced in that area, and it's important also to have emergency systems where if we do have to evacuate or leave our homes, that we have a system that's effective, that will help us protect the citizens in the community.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for your question. If you look at that original document prior to it being rewritten in 2017, you will find my name on it. I was part of the original Community Wildfire Planning Committee, along with Tom Adams from the state, Forest Service folks, and at that time, County Emergency Services Director Dara Decker Salmon. I am keenly aware, past 20, over 20 years, I've been training firefighters, there's some of them in the room that I fought fire between, or next to, over that time. I understand that the, I clearly understand the issue of urban wildland interface, and there is a plan. Currently, JB Brock is our, our emergency services, he, I believe, still is a wildland firefighter also, so he has a good handle on it. There is a plan in place, it's implementing that plan, which I think is critical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, so we are quickly approaching 8:30. Now, we wanna do one more question. Now, I'm actually okay to go a little later, but I'm not sure candidates are, we've gone for an hour, I think, hour and 30 minutes, so I wanna be sensitive to them. Remember, we do have the table talk afterwards, you can go to their tables and ask them those individual questions. Let's go, what, I don't know, did we hear from the Farm Bureau? I'm not sure we heard from, okay, that's who we need to hear from, so let's go ahead.
Gene Hardy, Union County Farm Bureau, and first of all, I'd like to thank the chamber for your continued support of agriculture and for putting this forum together. I actually have three questions.
Pick one.
Pick one? Okay.
If you can, if you can pick one.
Even though grass field burning has curtailed sharply the last few years, it's still an essential tool for agriculture, and Union County has a well-respected by ODA and EPA program that took a lot of time to put together, do you continue, would you continue to support that program?
I think we're starting with Colleen.
Yeah, you guys have done a great job of the propane burning and keeping it down, and I know it always irritates everybody in LaGrande when there's field burning, but it is, we are agriculture and natural resources first, and it is necessary, and, yeah, it's, it's been terrific. That's it.
Thank you.
You guys are working hard.
Thank you.
We work hard.
John Lackey.
Yeah, it's a great program, we have to support our agriculture. My background is farm management, I was raised on a cow-calf operation, we've raised some hay. There are certain management skills that need to be applied, and processes that need to be applied to give quality product and a volume of product, so that we're economically profitable and can continue on with our farming operations. So I would be 100% for it, like anything, it needs to be managed.
Thanks, John. Paul.
Thank you, Gene. Short answer is yes, I am in complete support of field burning, it's a tool in the toolbox of the farmers, grass seed farmers in particular, there is occasionally a wheat stubble that goes up, many of those are by accident. I think as long as we've got, back to that last question, catastrophic wildfires in the west, and it's not just in Oregon, we were getting Canadian smoke last summer, early on. I don't know that there's any way that we can curtail farmers from burning their fields, especially with the steps that they've taken to mitigate the impact to communities.
Thank you, Paul.
And you're gonna go four for four, yes. I already, already responded earlier on, about this topic on the other question, so I'm gonna try to speed up and maybe we get one more question in.
Thank you.
Should we do one more, are you guys okay, well, I wanna be sensitive to you as candidates too, are you okay to do one more?
Back of the tables, too, answering, I'll stay here as long as it needs.
Okay, should we do one more in the back? We've got someone way, I guess, we need a microphone over there, so you.
Okay.
Travis, Travis, you picked somebody, here we go.
Thank you, I'm Zeke Hosa, I'm on the Oregon State Housing Council, so my question is how each of you feel about our housing in Union County, and how it relates to economic development.
John.
Yeah, we, we have a need for all levels of housing, especially for our indigent, we have shelter from the storm, we have some other facilities that are available to families who are in the street, and I think that, that those government-subsidized programs help the community for those who are in distress. As far as the community is concerned, the quality of the house, of the homes in our community represent who we are as a society. You know, maintaining your homes, keeping your yard cleans, eliminating 14 cars in the driveway, some of the things that, that I admire about the work that's been done in Elgin, of cleaning it up. I think it's exemplary of what some of our other communities can do to provide good, adequate housing and promote tourism as a result of having a proud community.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Paul.
Thank you. So, the other evening, I was having a conversation with some folks, and we were talking about with the sale of Hot Lake, the, the plans and vision there is 250 family wage jobs, which is incredible. Where are we going to put them? So, and I did not have an answer, so I went to a Realtor, John, excuse me, Kent Coppinger, and asked him what his view of it was, and he said that there is, it is a bit of a tight market, there is some development that's planned, and I apologize for not getting the streets right in LaGrande, but 18th to 20th, just to the west of the theater, or the drive-in, there's some apartments going in there, there's some room in some of the trailer courts, vacant places for trailers, and I think that there's also a fair amount of property, actually, he said there's a fair amount of property in the outlying areas also. Kind of a chicken or the egg problem to have when we talk about housing and urban, or, excuse me, housing and economic development.
Thank you.
Matt.
Not really my expertise, but I do know we have a housing problem. There are a lot of people that are coming to this county and cannot find a house. I guess that is a, I guess we're full? Is that, is that, is that what it is? I know there is a lot of subsidized housing, and that is, in my opinion, a problem, a problem. Our poverty level is at 30%, nationwide, it should be at 7%. So that is a serious problem that we are looking at here. I don't know, more subsidized housing, is that just gonna increase that to 40%, 50%? I would say, let's try to get our poverty level down to a national standard, and then look, chicken, boy, that isn't a good idea. But poverty level needs to go down, housing, we need more housing for the poverty, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
When I was commissioner, there was a housing project going to be built, and we spent a great deal of time trying to talk them into, why don't you take that money and go into the community, or get into the neighborhoods where there are houses that need to be fixed up that would work for that, instead of doing a project where everybody gets stuck together, close together, which never works. I was in a community the other night where the police, the sheriff's deputy was giving a report, and most of the calls that he had answered were to a housing development. I've talked to Z about this before. We need to fix up houses that are there, and as far as expanding out into the agricultural areas, if you will. I have a song called "Slickers and the Stickers." I had a man tell me once that he was out doing, doing his farming, and a man came out running out of the new housing, or the new housing project, and said, "You can't do that. I just wash my windows." I mean, there's, you have to be really cognizant of the urban-rural interface when you're thinking, we can just build a bunch of houses out that way.
Right. Thank you, Colleen.
Your lovely wife has just asked me to make sure that we can clarify for the audience who is running against whom.
Okay, so let's talk about that. We're, I think what we need to do is I want to honor your time, honor our candidates' time. This can be an exhausting process. I think we can agree on that. Real quick, will you, let's see, who is running against who? So can we see that?
Yeah, I was going to say Matt and John.
Matt and John?
May I?
And Paul and Colleen.
I am running for Union County position number one. My opponent is Colleen MacLeod.
He's only using that brace for sympathy. He takes it off when he goes outside.
Oh, do you want me to say that, too? And I am running against John Lackey.
Position two.
John, your turn.
Position.
Position two.
Nice. Okay. Perfect. And John, you're good? Okay. So let's do this. Again, for the sake of time, let's do the two-minute wrap-up. I'd appreciate you guys coming out front, and really what we need to know, you know, we've gotten a lot of questions, a lot of good questions. There are some things you're not going to know right now. You're not in the job, it's going to be tough to tackle that until you get there. But you need to tell us specifically, why should we vote for you? What is it about you that is unique, that will capture our attention to the point where we will have faith and believe that you will execute on this position in a high level? I think one thing that we can all agree on is that we want to see results, but we also understand there's a process to get us to those results. And so for that, I thank you for putting up with this. I thank you for honoring our time, your time. And so I will let Corinne decide who will go first and how, oh, we need to draw.
Why do you do that?
I'm sorry, let's draw.
Okay.
Because I don't even know. All right, so let's, we're going to draw who goes first, and we'll just go on down the line. And again, we're asking for just your final two minutes on why we will vote for you. All right, I'll give you that.
Paul, you're up first. Two-minute round.
Thank you. I love Union County. I said in my opening remarks, my wife and I had choices to work other places, to go other places. We chose to be here. We chose to raise our family here. I'm looking at this as though I am applying for a new job. I was raised that you don't quit one job before you have another. I know there's been some discussion about whether I'm going to keep teaching or not. If it comes to pass on the 15th that I am elected, I will retire from teaching, which is a career that I have dearly loved, but I'm ready to do something else. I think that when you, when you look for things that I represent, it's having been in the woods, having run the chainsaw, having sharpened the chainsaw, thinned the forest. There's been nights that, and again, there's some of them in this room, that I've slept in rock pits because we were out late, that late at night fighting fire in our local forest. We're talking about places where you're looking down and you see La Grande, you see Cove, Phillips Creek. A few years ago, we were right outside of Elgin, and those things are incredibly valuable to me. And I think that if we can, as a county commissioner, I can work on supporting agriculture, take those small steps that I talked about earlier, promoting small business and those incremental increases and improvements. I think that those are some things that we really need to work on. The idea of kids leaving school districts from all over the county and not knowing, or knowing that they won't be able to put their skills to work in this county really bothers me. I will work tirelessly to make opportunities for those kids, whether it's through skill development, which I have a lot of experience in, or education, higher education, getting those kids here. It was said earlier, support of our law enforcement. Somehow, we need to take a look at a new jail. Thank you. I would appreciate your vote.
Thanks, Paul.
Paul, thank you. All right.
Matt Scarfo.
Can I get two minutes on the clock, please?
There we go.
I'm not looking four years. I'm looking eight years. I'm looking 16 years, if you let me. I'm not here for one term. There's not much you could do in one term, in my opinion. Two terms, definitely need eight years. If they, if they get rid of the term limits, I'm here for 16. I'll be here as long as you vote me in. Someone told me once, you should always end with quotes from very, very good people. So I have two quotes written down, if you don't mind me reading. These quotes are from our county commissioners right now. This is from the advice interviews from La Grande Alive, thank you Brent, thank you Will, for doing this, back in September 26, 2017. Jack Howard, and I quote, "One of the things that we are lacking here is diversity. One of the things that we keep doing over and over again is relying on the people that are established, that are older. It's time for our younger people to start running for office. People in their early twenties need to run for city council. People in their 30s need to be county commissioners." Well, I'm not in my 30s, I missed it by a couple of years. Steve McClure, his advice on the show, and I quote, "You need to be just as nice as you can be." You can't afford to make any more enemies than you're going to make in this job. You have to like people. If you don't like people, this is not a job to be into." In my opinion, I think I meet both their criteria when I, when I read this. And in baseball, that's batting a thousand, I just went two-for-two. I want to thank you very much, Bob. Thank you very much for all this. This is fantastic. Thank you, everyone. I can't believe how awesome you pulled this off. Thank you, Tate McCandy, you sounded beautiful, too, when you were singing. Time's up. Vote for Matt Scarfo.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Colleen MacLeod.
I think the one thing that I bring to this office is experience, 12 years' worth of experience. I have proved myself that when I say I'm going to do something, I do it. If you are looking for a history of how I've made that commitment and followed through, I have information on my table back there of what I have done. I love this job. The reason I don't have this job still, and I'm still not doing it, is I had a stalker that drove me out of office, a very, very dangerous man, that turned me into government standards and practices twice. He constantly demanded where I was and where I was traveling to. He had a violent history against women. I went to the legislature, tried to get protection for elected officials from the same kind of harassment that he was giving to me, and it was turned down because they thought, the Oregon Newspaper Association thought if we had some parameters on what people could ask of government, then they would clear out their sunshine laws. So I actually was fearful for driving around by myself, so I didn't run again. And when I was asked to run for this office, and I was asked to run for this office, I made sure that he was no longer here. And he is no longer here. And so I am running. I am a person of my word. I have energy to spare for the things that I believe in, and Union County and rural Oregon and rural America are my hot button, and I am ready to work to make sure that they are not in danger as I feel that they are today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. There it is. John Lackey.
I'm very passionate about public service. I've been in public service for my lifetime, president of a couple rotary clubs, as I said earlier, vice chairman of the Shrine Hospital. This job is very complex. It takes an awful lot of analytics of where we are, where we're going, what our options are, and most importantly, what are our opportunities are, and how we will plan long-term to move ahead. I will be a full-time commissioner. I don't see this as a part-time job. It's too complex, there's too much history to know, there are too many variables that we need to pursue to do it on a part-time basis. We're losing a great leader, and I would hope to bring the skills that I've had in the military, in the planning commission, in my business, in the city council, and other experience that I've had with other organizations to this job. This is not a popularity contest, it's a job of managing the managers of Union County, all of the departments. I like to think that I'm going to bring value to it. Certainly, I will bring experience to it. The important thing about a two-term person or a four-term, one or two-term person, is that if you have the skills and if you've been dealing with budgets in the 30 to $40 million category, and if you have made relationships in Salem where we get 83% of the revenue that comes to this county from Salem, we need to have real good relationships with those people. Judgment is an essential thing. I don't think there's a person in the room that has 100% judgment, but I don't think there's anybody here in the room who's going to look at it more strongly and in greater depth, pursue options, and include the people. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. So there you have it. I want to thank candidates again, thank you for being here, putting up with this. Your time is valuable, and I am just impressed. I think we, as a community, have a very complex decision to make. I want to thank our media for being here tonight, too, and all you've done to make the night possible, so thank you. And the organizations who sponsored the evening, thank you to them as well. So for you, you should be receiving a ballot in the mail, I believe, this next week. I think this is coming, yeah. So when you get the ballot, I hope that you remember what you've heard tonight, that you contemplate and consider what your dreams and aspirations are for our county and what you see happening going forward. And you definitely have a very complex decision to make. These are fine people, quality people, leaders in their own right and in our community, and we thank you again. Corinne, thank you, Corinne, for being the hostess here, and I think-
Happy to do it.
And the runners of the microphones, thank you. And so on behalf of Union County Chamber of Commerce, have a wonderful evening and get out and vote.
And we encourage you to remember that there's table talk afterwards, so all the candidates will be at their tables. Please feel free to get up and ask them any pointed questions that you have.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.